Good evening, everybody. Calling the town council meeting of May 2nd, 6:00 PM to order. First order of business is roll call.
Councillors. Bloom.
Here.
Burdick.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Leveque.
Here.
Ludke.
Here.
Mendez.
Here.
Neary. Penn.
Here.
Schnapp.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Tamish.
Here.
Turkelson.
Here.
We have 12.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance. Councilor Tamish.
I would like to invite Colonel Jane Ward to the podium. Colonel Ward graduated from Wellesley College, was commissioned in the U.S. Air Force while an optometry student at the University of California, Berkeley. Jane cared for military optometry patients for two years at Andrews Air Force Base, then earned an M.D. at the Uniformed Services University. She served as the sole Air Force ophthalmologist in the Western Pacific region based in the Philippines. She then went on to become the aviation ophthalmologist and flight surgeon at the Brooks Air Force Base School of Aerospace Medicine in San Diego, excuse me, San Antonio, and then became an ophthalmology residency director and ophthalmology consultant to the U.S. Air Force Surgeon General. In 2000, she was chosen to develop the U.S. Air Force International Health Specialist Program at the U.S. Air Force Surgeon General Office at the Pentagon. The 24-year-old International Health Specialist Program has become a very successful special certification and assignment option for all U.S. Air Force medics, improving our coalition partnerships on a wide variety of international missions. Jane retired from her 26-year military career in 2002. To expand her knowledge in population health and wellness, she earned a master's degree in public health and helped found the Health in Buildings Roundtable at the National Institutes of Health. This group helped focus our COVID pandemic response to include optimizing indoor air quality and respiratory protection. Certified in lifestyle medicine, Jane continues to promote healthy lifestyle choices and the interdependence of human and environmental health. She's passionate about considering the climate emergency in all policy decisions. She is a volunteer on the town's Infrastructure and Energy Committee. Jane? Welcome and thank you.
Thank you very much. Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. If you'd like to speak for public comment, you have three minutes. We'd like you to please identify yourself, sign in, make sure the microphone's on. Those are all the rules for this evening so far. Anybody here to speak to public comment? Can't hear you. Is the microphone on?
It is now.
You could raise it up a little, too. That would be good.
I signed in earlier. My name is Eric Schwab from West Hyannis. I'm here tonight to speak about a proposal before the Affordable Housing Growth and Development Trust Fund for $2 million to underwrite a building no one wants. They're meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM. They've been unable to confirm if we're allowed to speak at that meeting, so we're coming here tonight. Wynn Development, we all know and love, wants us to pay $2 million towards their proposed monstrosity at 307 Main Street. Wynn Development is proposing a so-called affordable housing development at $747 a square foot. $747 a square foot. They want to charge $665,000 per unit. They want $535,000 per bedroom. That's $1,600,000 for a three-bedroom in Hyannis. 1.6 for a three-bedroom, no parking, no yard, no grocery, no nothing. This is not affordable housing. We need to build housing in Hyannis that Hyannis residents can afford to buy and rent. Why we continue to spin our wheels entertaining foolish proposals from this developer is incomprehensible. The town manager and other members of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board have a fiduciary responsibility to exercise their powers for the purpose of sound and prudent economic development. Sound and prudent. The only question you have to ask is this: Do you think investing in Wynn's project at 307 Main Street is a sound and prudent investment in our future? Do you support the development of housing that local residents can't afford? I think we all know the answer to that question. I hope the town manager, a voting member of the board, does as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
My name is Natalie Pittenger, Hyannis. I also wanted to speak on the proposal for Wynn Development for the grant from the trust fund. I didn't realize it, but I guess the trust fund is actually supplied by our taxes, so I never noticed that before. But in any event, in reading over the submission papers for this proposal, and by their own admission, they do come up with $665,000 per unit. So wouldn't it just be easier to give each person of the 120 people that it will house $665,000 and let them go buy a house where they want? They can easily buy a house for that amount, or it certainly would be a hefty down payment. After all is said and done, these units are still going to cost a monthly rent for these affordable workers. I just don't, I guess I just don't see the necessity of the cost being that high. And I don't know what they did to drive up the cost, and maybe they did nothing. But nonetheless, that's way too high. The other thing that I noticed in their submission papers was they won't start until Q1 '26, and they wouldn't complete until Q1 '28. And they think this is addressing our acute housing problem. Well, that's four years out. I don't know how that addresses anything acute. The other, in looking at their supposed funding, $22 million from mass housing, $44 million from Fed housing, so that comes up to, I guess, almost $80 million. Isn't that an insane price tag, even today? Does municipal really want to endorse that ridiculous price? The, Wynn says that they will have 120 units of mixed-income housing for workforce and families earning a range of incomes. For the affordable units, they said there would be 77 units between 30% and 60% AMI. Okay? And then there would be 32 units between 100% and 120% AMI. And then market rate 11, so that is whatever. But the point is, they left out the people between 60% and 100%. I'm sure that's got to cut out a whole bunch of affordable people, affordable qualifiers. What about the in-between? In order for a person to be qualified for affordable housing in Massachusetts, they can't earn any more-
You have three minutes, if you could finish up.
Okay. Any more than 80% of the area median income. So they're actually cutting out some section that Massachusetts insists upon for Massachusetts housing. So I have more, but my time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wish to speak? We're being serenaded, so you can get in key, and we have a contender.
Interesting, interesting choice of entertainment. My name is Chris Kuhn, and I want to apologize to the committee for appointments because they've already heard me. I just want to speak to the Wynn Development about parking. And you need to understand, everyone needs to understand, make no mistake, there is no available parking in Hyannis for any of those residents that cannot park on their property without having to pay. And the going rate for parking now is $10 a day. So someone rents an apartment, they're going to have to pony up another $300 bucks a month, and it'll be going up soon because summer's here, and that is certainly not going to keep those apartments affordable. So the $3 million, or $2 million they want, it might be better served sending it out to the Marson's Mills Elementary School property, use it for affordable housing out there. The Wynn property certainly is appropriate for apartments, just not 120 of them, you know? If you can't have enough room to provide parking for every tenant and every resident, then you shouldn't be able to build the project. We can't have people parking on Main Street or parking in the town lots for hours and hours, for days, for the whole day, tying up a parking place in front of a restaurant who needs customers. Just, it doesn't work. Just does not work. So the parking plan we have in town right now works perfectly well. Two-hour limits on Main Street, three-hour limit down at Ocean Street, where you also pay by the hour, and no overnight parking in any of the lots. People have this misconception that the North Street lot is a town parking lot. It's not. There are three town-owned parcels there that total two acres, and they don't, they're not contiguous. So there's much of that lot, an acre and a half of it essentially, that is privately owned. And if people want to, if those owners want to allow people to park, that's up to them. But I don't think any of the people in town who run businesses want to give up their parking for people who are going to be home all weekend and the car's going to sit out there. Doesn't help them. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Did you sign in?
I did.
Oh, good, thank you.
I am Grove Harris of West Hyannis Port, and I wanted to thank this council for the session that you had on the water quality, the PFAS stuff a couple weeks back. It was wonderful to feel proud of the way this town, this community, pulled together in a really serious problem in advance of it becoming a known how-to-deal-with-it kind of problem. I just felt proud of the leadership of this town. I also think that we're on the forefront, obviously, of all of this offshore wind development, another area in which we are leading the nation. So we've got both challenges and opportunities, difficulties, and things to be really proud of. So I decided that what I'd like to offer you is a way to put our housing problem on the same footing as a kind of national leadership. We have declared a climate emergency in this town, and we need to face up to that. I don't think our housing problems are business-as-usual, let's create enough new apartments, because there's no enoughness about how attractive a place this is to live and the housing crisis that's countrywide. So if we make something nice, there's gonna, I mean, it's gonna keep on coming. So help us think outside of the box. The thing I wanted to sell you on, and you can tell me who I'm supposed to, you know, put further inputs in, is it the committee, is it this forum? But it's called an eco-village. We need a place to study the kinds of housing that are being used, for example, post-Katrina. Do you remember seeing those really cute tiny homes that had like a really nice front porch? They were tiny inside, but they were really interesting self-sufficient units. We need to be able to explore that kind of housing in a setting where people can actually move in and try it out. Maybe we've set up a circle of that kind of housing with one available for everybody else to come and say, what would it mean to live in 600 square feet? Would that work for me and my family? Oh my goodness, they've installed a composting toilet. How would that work for me and my family? So that we've got a kind of a park feel where there's different kinds of housing, so that's one kind. Another I think we need to do is some kind of a summer yurt-type setup, similar to a campground. I want to tell you that the reason I'm able to keep the house that I now live in is because there were years when I rented it out for the summer and went camping on the Outer Cape. We have a ton of infrastructure in housing that is not used from at least September through June. Much of it is only used two weeks out of the year. This is a global problem of people investing in real estate and making it impossible for there to be a normalized people-live-here kind of model. So what if we figured out ways to make it safer for people to rent their homes during the winter? What if we pitched, you'll be helping out with the homelessness problem, and we as a town will figure out a way that you can actually be assured that these people will leave because we've got a yurt for them to go to in our really nice glamping or camping setup. These would be affordable things for the town to build, and we do have to find a way to leverage all that other infrastructure that exists and is underutilized. So this kind of partnership between the people who have those resources and the rest of the people who really need them, this town could pitch that and work with real estate agents, say, you know, who have you got? Do they want to help out? What kind of rent would they be willing to do it for? Small cut for the real estate agent, but a guarantee. I know that as a homeowner, the common wisdom was you can't afford to rent for the winter because you can't risk that person not leaving, because you can't get them out.
That's three minutes, if you could finish up.
I will. You can't get them out fast enough to take care of your higher rental summer thing. So mostly what I want to know is, where could I help develop this kind of thinking outside of the box further? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody online?
Yes, we have Heather Hunt. Heather, you may unmute. You have three minutes.
Thanks very much, and I'll come in at less than three minutes. You have a busy night. Thanks for the chance to zoom in. It's so helpful with work commitments. My comments actually tie to the woman who just spoke, and I'd love to hear more from her. I went, I want to speak just for a moment about the LCP process. I went to the Hyannis LCP meeting because I really wanted to hear that discussion. There were about 10 members of the public there, about six from Hyannis. It's probably something on the order of, you know, .000 something percent of the population. Word was there was about 17 people at the Centerville meeting. I had a chance to watch the Osterville meeting because the library recorded it. At each, there was mention that the LCP committee may be talking with the council or leadership about adding process to enable more community discussion. Wanted to thank you for that and strongly encourage more community education and discussion opportunities about what's being proposed. Just a couple observations. There was no substantive overview of the land use and zoning change proposals. I think people really need that. There was also no maps to let you see where changes are contemplated. It makes it pretty close to impossible to comment thoughtfully. And the plan was to have people put their thoughts on these sort of three-by-three stickies in red and green dots on boards rather than to have discussion. I think there's so much to be learned by hearing from others that I just wanted to strongly encourage whatever you might have in mind or in the works for a community-wide discussion opportunity process where we can all really hear from each other. There was a statement at both of the meetings that people don't really want to take a microphone. In practice, though, everyone in the rooms actually had something to say and really seemed to want to say it out loud. I thought that was a great sign and kind of exactly what we need because people really need to hear each other, to understand each other. The regular LCP committee meetings are not really an option for that because the common opportunity is a three-minute, sometimes even two, so it's just way too much to fit into 120 seconds. And finally, I do think you'd have a tremendous turnout if the public had a better sense of what was being proposed, right? Conversion of single-family homes to multifamily, cottage clusters, mixed-use and multi-unit development, redevelopment and village centers, effectively paying people not to short-term rent and so on. I think if there was communication campaign on the substance, you'd really turn out people and fill a big venue. So thanks for any efforts to get more substantive public education and community dialogue going so we can hear more from each other. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. There is no further public comment on Zoom. Okay. Anybody else here? All right. We're going to move on to council response to public comment. Council Ludke.
Okay, I could talk for hours, as people know, but I'll try to make it brief because we heard some amazing things tonight. Jane's walking out the door, but I did want to speak to Jane. I mean, she does so much, and it's fascinating that she and Grove are sitting together because the brain power of those two women is phenomenal. And Jane has an innovative alternative septic system in her yard that she's doing some testing on. She's absolutely phenomenal. I've had many interactions with her. She's led me to things that have enriched my ideas about things. So thank you, Jane, and a fellow Air Force veteran. Thank you so much for coming tonight. And since Grove is sitting there beside Jane, Grove, amazing. I would think that kind of thing would be exactly what the housing committee would love to hear. These are the kind of ideas that I think these committees were formed to do, this out-of-the-box thinking. I love the EcoLab. I know exactly, because I do have a background in architecture, what you're talking about after Katrina, some of those homes that were built. And it's fascinating, the yurts, I've seen those. Most recently, I was in Doha, Qatar, and there were some yurts there that were beautiful. I mean, they had bathrooms in them, they were used, you know? So it's great ideas, and I would, I don't know, other people give their opinions, but I think once this housing committee gets going, you would be an expert witness to bring forward your ideas. I want to thank the three individuals, Natalie, Eric, and Chris Kuhn, who spoke about Wynn. Perhaps Mr. Ells could let us know if they could listen in tomorrow to the Zoom, and if there is an opportunity for public comment at the beginning. I'm not so sure of the answer to that myself. I do have some strong ideas because I was, now Charlie is, I was the liaison to the historic Main Street Waterfront Committee during the time that Wynn presented their ideas. And even though they did do some changes, they were very modest and not substantive. And I think they could have done a lot more to listen to the public, to address the public and the streetscape. I still think that building could be dropped anywhere. It doesn't, to me, speak to the Main Street vernacular. And because of that, and I know it's not too long ago that the Affordable Trust put out the notice of availability of funds and nobody responded, so I'm aware of that, too. So this is a good thing that we're getting respondents. And Wynn has every right to ask for these funds. I don't think that they should be given the funds, and Natalie, you mentioned it. I think it was October, this council voted to give our CPA funds to the trust, and those are 3% on top of your taxes. And I consider that precious, and it's kind of like a charity navigator situation. And I was happy to do that, to support housing. And I really hope there's a very careful analysis because all of you did some really amazing analysis of the numbers. Thank you for taking the time to do that. And I'm sure the committee will do the same analysis and come up with a good recommendation for us, knowing how precious those CPA funds and what they can do for this community. So thank you. And then Chris Kuhn, you're the parking expert. I mean, you work in parking. We know that you worked for the Steamship Authority, I believe, in the parking. So you're kind of a parking czar. So when you speak about parking, I really listen, and that, too, I think Wynn could have given, and they didn't give. And again, that's Wynn's decision. Wynn made all the decisions. So they've made it, they've made their case, but we can make our case, too, that perhaps if they'd stepped forward a little more, we might be better prepared to give them some of our money. And I spoke about, again, Grove, that was fantastic. Finally, Heather Hunt. I have to agree with Heather. I'm back to work. I've been back to work for the last few months, really, you know, starting in January. So I haven't been attending as many meetings as I used to be. So I'm a little bit out of touch, but that's a good thing because I can empathize with my constituents, because everybody's busy. So I really was looking for something more at the Hyannis meeting. I attended it, and I was extremely disappointed. And I tried to bring up some questions, and I didn't think they were satisfactorily answered. And there were other people trying to speak, and we were told, no, 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 just put your dots on the charts. Well, I wasn't comfortable putting my dots on the charts because it wasn't just a black or white answer. These were long statements. So, and I heard many times throughout the presentation that we meet people where they are. Well, then you have to meet people who don't have the time to keep up with this. They want to have a little more information given to them. They're there, they want a discussion. And I hope, moving forward, and Heather's right, when you come to the LCP meetings, you've just given the public comment time. So I'd like to see a little more engagement, and, well, a lot more engagement with people going forward in the LCP because it is so critical. Thank you.
Anybody else's public comment responses? Council Bloom.
With regard to the $2,000, $2 million, rather, I'd like to know what Wynn will do with the $2 million to reduce the impact of high rents for people who need them. I'd just like to know if the money will help people pay their rents.
Okay. Anybody else's response to public comment? Council Leveque.
Thank you, President Penn. If I could ask if Town Manager Ells could come, who's the chair of the Affordable Housing Committee? I just have a few questions. I just want to clarify for the public- clarify for the public. I don't have the proposal in front of me, but we had a couple of mixed messages. The $2 million that they're asking for is, and this actually addresses also Counsel Bloom's question, this $2 million they're asking for, they're asking for, then the intent is if they receive the money, they'll be able to reduce their building costs and therefore offer those different levels of affordability, hence the lower affordability. Is that a correct statement? Or could you answer that question? What exactly is that $2 million correlate to?
Mark Ells, Town Manager.
Do you want me to smile, Eric?
Hey, thank you. We're reviewing their proposal, quite honestly.
Okay.
You know, if I back up and then try to address your question. Town Council, I think in 2007, created the Affordable Housing and Economic Development Trust Fund. And they did it not as a subcommittee, like many of ours are, but under mass general law. It allows a city or a town to create this. And the way it's created, given our form of government, is that whoever the town manager is, is on the committee and chairs it, and then there's at least four other members. So that's been in place for a while. Then, depending on what the source of the funding is that's used in the Affordable Housing and Economic Development Trust Fund, that carries with it the criteria that comes with the source of those funds. So in this case, we have a very small part for economic development, but that's not the issue here. The question is the affordable housing. Now, in discussions with CPC, a committee that the town has created, they were not, they did not feel effective in the administration of affordable housing monies. And if you know CPC, there's three uses under the law. It's open space, it's recreation, and it's affordable housing. So we have gone to them twice now for $2.5 million, and that has become the primary source of funding for housing-related eligible projects that come before the trust fund. So the criteria from CPC that they would administer is the same criteria that we administer. So I'd be more than happy to share that criteria with you. So we don't get to make up eligibility or anything of that nature. And so to come back to your question, each project that comes in is reviewed, and we look at their financials, and we look at whatever their request is. And we see whether it meets the eligibility criteria for whatever that type of funding is. So that's under review. We haven't heard this proposal yet. We do have the documentation for it. And so the role of the Affordable Housing Economic Development Trust Fund is to evaluate, not relevant to the merits of the project, but relevant to the criteria to address either affordable housing or economic development. So that's what we'll be doing. I'll be more than happy to share the outcome of that. This is the first we'll be hearing from the proponent on it. The other members are the Assistant Town Manager, the Finance Director, a representative of housing, and a representative of economic development. And so that'll be heard. There is the, and Counsel Bloom, right now, the eligibility criteria for this potential use isn't rent subsidy directly. So this will be heard. Anybody from the, I've been on it for, this is my 12th year, as Assistant Town Manager for four, and now I'm Town Manager for eight. We have always had public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and this one will as well. The difference between being able to have public comment while an item is discussed versus general public comment up front is a little bit different because it almost leads you to needing a second meeting if people want to come back and to be able to comment on what they heard. But that's, you know, that's okay. It's just a little bit different process. But yes, there's always public comment. There are always, at least for the 12 years that I've been there, and it's on every agenda. Did I answer your question?
Not really.
Well, I don't know.
So I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't Elizabeth Jenkins.
When we look at the performer, we have to see if it's a financially viable project. And then when they ask us, so if it's a financially viable project without this money, and they can do the affordable, then that will impact the eligibility for their request. If they can't do the project without the subsidy, and we want that affordable, that is typically where we have a back-and-forth discussion. And there are limits per unit above what's ever required of them on what the trust will give to any particular entity. Okay? So I don't know the outcome of that yet.
I guess I, let me just rephrase the question. I'm sorry if I couldn't, Mr. President Penn. When they come before us asking us for $2 million, they're asking for monies so that they can create, they're asking us to assist them in creating more affordable housing. Is that what they're asking for? So you're saying, not economic development, they're asking for to create and make it more affordable because of the cost of building?
That's what we're looking at. Yes, that's what they're asking.
Yes, thank you.
But we haven't determined that their ask is eligible for that yet.
Correct.
And that's what we'll be doing. And then it isn't like driven by, the chair tends to coordinate the discussion amongst the other four members, but then is also a voting member of that, not unlike what the president of the council does with you all. So it isn't like I direct where this goes. So by asking me not to approve or disapprove, that's not really the appropriate way to go forward. But I understand because a lot of people don't necessarily engage with this particular committee. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
So my point was, is that the fact that they're coming here to help us create more affordable housing, the units are not for sale. I believe those numbers, which, you know, they're exorbitant, but that's what it costs to build units. And handing somebody money to go to buy, that's taking care of one person. And the fact that they, you know, unfortunately, some of these people don't have credit. They just need a place to stay. And WIN is a nationally award-winning company. Quite honestly, though, I believe, I'm pleased that they're partnering with us, that we have an opportunity to work with a company like that to utilize the funds that have been, and again, Mark, you don't have to.
Mr. Levesque, we don't need to defend the project. I don't think this is the appropriate place to do that.
No, but what I'm saying, I just want to clarify that, and Counsel Luckey had mentioned that she was against the project or whatever. So I'm just saying that, I just think that it's important to understand that the, I'm sorry, I got a little offline because you interrupted me, but the idea that we need to use, this is the type, we have this housing trust to create affordable housing. And so I look forward to seeing that. I look forward to the board's work in regards to that. We have some very qualified people on that, and I'm sure they'll make a good judgment call in regards to the decision moving forward. So thank you for that. Moving forward on public comment, to Grove, there was actually a contingent that visited Greentown Labs from the town of Barnstable. Joe Curatoni organized it, who at one point was the mayor of Somerville, and now he's the president of the Northeast Clean Energy Council. I wanted to make sure I got that. I didn't want to just say the acronym. And so we visited there. I would love to see some sort of innovative, energy innovative hub here in the town of Barnstable. We've worked towards that. I don't know exactly where the status is currently in the partnership, but he has, you know, this would be a great place to some sort of modular homes. Tiny Homes, by the way, is approved at the legislative level, but the state building commissioner has not made a decision on what it looks like in the books. So therefore, towns haven't been able to exercise anything on that. Done some research on that, followed up on that. So some conversations with state officials should occur to try to see if we can fast-forward that, make those things possible, what you're talking about. So I'm definitely in favor of things like that. There are some movement towards that, and I'd love to have a conversation, entertain a conversation in regards to further that discussion. And then, you know, I think that's it. I'm just trying to look through, yeah, that's it. So thank you very much. Thank you, President Penn, for that. And thank you, Mark Ells, for answering my question.
Thank you. Counsel Luckey, make your court, please.
Yeah, I just had a question for Mr. Ells. You had mentioned the criteria comes with the type of money. Where would people find that criteria associated with affordable housing through the CPC? Where would they, is that published online?
It's probably, I could, I will, I will look on our website. I'm not positive where it's published under that particular board, but I'll get it for you. And I will, I'll have Lynn advise me on where we can post it. I'll send it to Cynthia so she can share it with all of you.
That would be terrific. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
I had one comment I just wanted to make in response to Heather Hunt and Counselor Luckey. I've spoken to the LCPC leadership and to Planning and Development leadership about a future session focused on public comment on the draft LCP before it goes to the planning board and the town council. So that's been thrown out there on the dance floor because we've heard the feedback from the previous session. So that's going to be there. And Mr. Kuhn, you've got cheap parking on the other side of the harbor because it's 28 bucks off of Ocean Street. At least it's been that since Staffordville days on Nantucket. And Grove, you must have met my cousin out there at the Outer Cape in the yurts he's been talking about. He was talking about yurts 20 years ago. So, like-minded. All right. We're going to move on. We, oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Clark.
Just a quick clarification. I just, while people were speaking, I looked up under the Community Preservation Committee, and the category-specific criteria is on their webpage, under Community Housing. So the criteria is there for housing, open space, and historic preservation. Thank you.
There you go. Instant answer to question. Town Manager Communications, which were pre-recorded and written. Does anybody have any questions? Any questions specifically? I see Elizabeth Jenkins is here from Planning and Development, and she did a follow-up summary on the LCP. Any questions for her? Oh, Counsel Ells. Counsel Ells, yeah. That's my mode. Okay, Town Manager Ells, excuse me.
Oh, boy.
You just got a transfer.
Mark, that's okay. Thank you. Thank you for recognizing me. And I do, I think the issue brought up by one of the public speakers, while we do have Elizabeth Jenkins here in the council, you know, the moving forward with the local comprehensive plan is obviously an important planning document for our community, for land use, and then the results of, you know, what we expect for outcomes from that document. It really looks 10 years into the future for what we want to see happen in those areas. I think it's really important that the council understand that, and I know, I think you do, but this document will come to you in a final draft form, and then you will review it, and then you will either approve it or you will not approve it, and you will send it back to the LCPC for modification. We began a discussion at the last agenda meeting, and I think it's really important that I point it out right now, that if there are areas that the council is concerned, I would ask that you communicate them to the Chair of the LCPC and Elizabeth Jenkins so that when they bring that draft to you, they've already addressed it. I mean, we're in the second phase of a two-phase effort here. And I think that if you feel that, for example, more opportunity for public comment is needed, now's the time. Because when we get to the end and you're at the, you know, you're at the five-yard line, it's more difficult at that point to back up and maybe get to whatever an area is that you feel may need more opportunity for input or modification. So I've met with Director Jenkins on this, and certainly, you know, the sooner we have the conversation, the better. But my point is, I may have appointed the committee, but then I stepped back. I stepped back, and it's your committee. It's kind of odd the way that this is written. And so the product will be yours to approve. And so we want to make sure we give you a product that is at that point ready for approval. So just, please take that under advisement. Thank you.
Yes, and the draft chapters are all online right now, and the LCPC has requested that people send their comments in before May 16, I believe. Yes? Okay. So we have until May 16 to comment. Any and all comments are available. If you don't want to work with the submission online that they have, you're certainly welcome to write an email and submit it to Planning and Development. And if you're like me and have pages and pages of comments, sometimes that's easier to do. So they look forward to reading all the comments and to taking them under advisement. Any other? Counsel Starr.
Thank you. I just want to say to Mr. Ells, thank you for keep pushing the state for responsibility for the wind, you know, the transformer stations and the wind farms. And just keep pushing. Thank you.
All right. All set? Okay, so next item on the agenda, we're going to act on the public session minutes. It was a long meeting, as we all know. There were a few things corrected. And I will entertain a motion to approve the minute says presented. There's a motion. There's a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Very opposed, abstain? One abstention. Counsel Mendez. Thank you, Town Clerk, for the minutes because that was, as will be today's, quite an effort. Communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports. We kind of did some of this already. So Counsel Schnep.
Thank you, President Penn. Another important planning project has just commenced. What we're going to be doing with a 14-acre parcel where the former Marson's Mills School is located, that's on 28 and Main Street in Marson's Mills. There was a kickoff meeting for the master planning project on Tuesday, and it was, I would say, fairly, very well-attended. And it did involve some stickies and dots, but it was preceded by a vigorous half-hour, hour conversation about people's ideas for, you know, what could be, that that site could be used at. But this is just the beginning of this project tonight. As we speak, there is a virtual meeting regarding that site. And on Saturday, there will be an opportunity to actually walk the site with the Planning and Development staff. That will be at 9:00 this Saturday. Again, probably right off of Main Street. They'll be having a table and coffee and opportunities to walk that site. There's also a link on the town website to add your comments. There's actually a map, and you can hit different possibilities. So it's a kind of very interactive. So I really encourage not only those residents who live and work in Marson's Mills, but anybody in the town who wants to weigh in, participate somehow in this process. Thank you.
Thank you for that information. Any other communications? All right. We're going to get into orders of the day, and just like we did last time, we're going to kind of work it backwards to front in deference to some people who are here. And we are going to take new business first because it needs to be voted on today. So this is on page 50, if you have an agenda item here. And Counsel Turkelson, would you like to read item number 2024-213?
Thank you, President Penn. This is an item of new business which may be acted upon by roll call, majority vote, as written. Item 2024-213. Item 2024-213, transfer order in the amount of $240,000 from fiscal year 2024 Department of Public Works General Fund Personnel Budget to fiscal year 2024 Department of Public Works Operating Expense and Operating Capital Budgets for the purpose of funding the purchase of equipment and road marking services.
We have motion and a second. Rationale, please.
Good evening, Madam President and Town Councilors. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works, with a scratchy voice, so, sorry about that.
Welcome to allergy season.
I feel fine, but just have a little, little frog. Due to vacancies in salaried positions throughout the fiscal year in the Department of Public Works, the department currently has unencumbered salary funds. The department proposes to utilize a portion of these funds to fund the following. The purchase of a new one-ton dump truck. This vehicle will be used to replace a currently existing DPW dump truck that would be given to the Community Services Department for use by their golf maintenance teams. Community Service Department has indicated that they do not use the truck frequently enough to justify buying a brand-new truck. Secondly, to increase the Highway Division's road markings budget line item. This line item is used for procuring contracts for long-line painting, which are the white edge lines and the yellow center lines on main roads, along various roads throughout the town. This service is contracted out because of the significant amount of long lines, more than 1 million linear feet in Barnstable, that need to be painted. The cost is obtained, the service is obtained through Barnstable County's yearly road construction items bid, and the bid value increased this year and is expected to increase next year as well. The estimated vacancy savings in the department for fiscal year 2024 personnel budget is in excess of $800,000. If approved, this request will reduce the estimated amount of unexpended fiscal year '24 appropriations that would be returned to the general fund at the close of the fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you. Council discussion or questions? Council Luckey.
Yes, thank you, Dan. I have a question, because I know this came up in previous years with the painting having to be delayed for some cost, I think. Do you do reflectivity tests? How do you determine when those white sidelines need to be? Is it an objective test? Are you using some sort of a scope? I mean, some sort of a device that tests reflectivity, or, or is it?
No, it's a visual, visual test. On the main roads, we're doing it every year, effectively, just to renew and have fresh, fresh markings. Other roads don't have to be painted every year, and that's why it varies from year to year, the amount we do. But it's, it's based on a visual that our engineers do.
Okay, and, and will this catch us up to where we need to be, or in your estimation? I mean?
It's, it's continuous every year.
It's continuous.
It's just...
It's just, our roads are so dark. They really are dark.
Right. And we're trying to...
So, it's...
Trying to help that situation and do as much of this as we can every year.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we need a roll call vote. Roll call majority.
Definitely not roll call.
It's not roll call. It's just a majority for the transfer. Okay. An amount of 240,000. So, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And the next item we're going to take is item 2024-184. It's appointments to board committees and commissions. We need an amendment made to this item to change the, I'll wait for you to find it, it's page 47. It's to change the date of the term expiring for the Steamship Authority Board of Governors, Mr. Jones. It's listed here as 12/31/2027, and it should be 12/31/2026. So, we need to amend this motion. Would anybody like to make that? We need to read it in? Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't do that yet. Council Mendez, would you like to do that, since it's from the Appointments Committee?
Sure. Let me see. This is item number 2024...
Is your mic on? Thank you.
Little rusty.
It's all right. You'll get it.
This is item number 2024-184. This is old business. It's resolved that the Town of Barnstable, I'm sorry, that the Town Council appoints the following individuals to a multi-member board committee commission. Council on Aging, Christine Beer, as an associate member to a term expiring 6/30/2026. Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Appeals Committee, Amanda Converse, as a Hyannis Business Community Member to a term expiring 6/30/2025. Human Services Committee, Suzanne Welch, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2024. Wendy Crocker, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2026. Infrastructure and Energy Committee, William Beal, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2024. Christopher Glalinger, as a reg, regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2026. Mid-Cape Cultural Senate Council, Carolyn Farrell, as a regular member to a term expiring Steamship Authority Board of Governors, Robert Jones, as the Town of Barnstable Representative Member, as a term expiring 12/31/2026.
Read it as is, so, 27.
2027. Youth Commissioner, Wellmer Junior D. Olivera, as a student member to a term expiring 6/30/2025. Noah Leonis, as a regular, as a student member to a term expiring 6/30/2025.
All right. Motion and a second. Yes.
I don't know if it matters, but Amanda Converse's name, I believe, is spelled incorrectly.
Amenada.
Amenada.
Amenada, Converse. All right, so maybe when we amend this, we'll, we'll change the spelling and we'll change the date. Who would like to so move? Council Star.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to, I make a motion to change, change this resolve to, to express, so, that Robert Jones is Town of Barnstable Representative Member to a term expiring 12/31/2026. And I would also, at the same time, change the spelling of Amanda Converse's first name.
There a second?
Second.
Council Clark, seconded that I saw. All right, is there any discussion on the amendment? All right, so this is, we have to vote on the amendment first. So, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Nobody opposed or abstained? Now, we can vote on the actual item, 2024-184, again, by majority vote. Excuse me? As amendment. Yes, thank you. All those in favor? As amended? Passes unanimously. And we are going to do old business, item number 2024-212. Council of that.
Thank you, President Penn. This is an item of old business, may be acted upon, majority vote of the full council. This is item number 2024-212, order authorizing and ratifying an intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Barnstable and the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth for technical support of the town's water quality monitoring and wastewater planning and estuary water quality sampling programs as written.
All right. Rationale.
Santos, Director of Public Works. The University of Massachusetts Dartmouth School for Marine Science and Technology has provided water quality monitoring and wastewater planning technical services to the town for over 20 years. UMass Dartmouth has retained for estuary water quality sampling and analytical services, pond and lake sampling and analytical services, development of pond and lake management plans, and wastewater planning efforts. Utilizing UMass Dartmouth has ensured that the town's wastewater planning efforts are consistent with the methodologies and method and models used to develop the nitrogen total maximum daily loads for Lewis Bay, Halls Creek, Centerville River, Three Bays, Pappanissett Bay, and Barnstable Harbor that have been approved by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Utilizing UMass Dartmouth has allowed the town to plan for and adapt the comprehensive wastewater management plan, develop pond and lake management plans, and continue tracking the water quality of our ponds, lakes, and estuaries. The current agreement with UMass Dartmouth was entered into in 2020 and has been amended to extend the term and to increase the compensation amount. Additional amendments are anticipated that would extend the agreement to December 31st, 2025. This vote seeks ratification of the existing contract and amendments and approval of upcoming amendments through December 31st, 2025. Because this contract is with a state agency, it is not subject to the procurement requirements of General Law Chapter 30B, but rather must be approved by the Town Council as an intergovernmental agreement. The contract will be funded from a combination of capital improvement project funds and Department of Public Works operating budget funds as appropriate. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? You answered my question about the intergovernmental part. I figured that. Council Tamish.
These funds have already been appropriated?
In some cases, but they all will be appropriated.
It's a continuing process for the funding?
Yes, correct.
All right, seeing, Council Clark.
Thank you very much, Director Santos.
Can you speak into the mic more?
Sure.
Thank you.
About what is the annual cost for this intergovernmental agreement?
Well, it, it varies depending on what we're doing. Some of the analytical work is on the order of $35,000 a year, but then we have the pond sampling and analysis, which varies depending on the size of the pond and the scope of the work. And then, the modeling efforts have been on the order of $100,000. So, it really varies depending on the task, and there's no really average amount every year.
Thank you. All right. Council Turkelson.
Here in the language, it's written approval of upcoming amendments. What are the upcoming amendments that we're approving? Is there anything specific, or are we just kind of giving that out?
No, we don't have them, we don't have them yet. This is just, this is simply just the council ratifying an agreement we have with UMass that we can use them. And, and because we don't have to go out to bid for this work under the state procurement rules, we have to have an intergovernmental agreement. And it just means that this agreement is going to go through the end of 2025, and that the council agrees that any amendments that we negotiate with them and work we have them do is appropriate and proper.
Under this umbrella?
Yes.
Yeah. Council Star.
Thank you. Can you, so what is the $1,100,000 for? Is that for this, this year? Am I reading that right?
Where are you reading that?
Am I on the right page? I'm on page 48. We're on 212. It says water quality sampling programs in the amount of not to exceed $1,122,136.
That's the maximum amount under the intergovernmental agreement that could be...
That you could, for one year, or?
That's the total amount going back to 2020.
Thank you. Okay.
It's just what's part of the existing agreement right now.
I was confused. I didn't, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Got all that out of the way. Everything clarified? Good. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed? Abstain? Nope. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to go to the schools. No?
Continue with Public Works.
We are? Okay. So, we're starting at, sorry, School Department, I got you all excited. I had schools written down. I'm sorry. All right. Under old business. Item number 2024-116. Council Clark.
Thank you very much, President Penn. This is old business requiring a public hearing and a roll call, two-thirds vote of the full council. Item number 2024-116, appropriation order in the amount of $2,850,000 for funding the public roads maintenance project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan.
Thank you for the second.
Dan Santos, Director of Public Works.
I need, that was the motion to open the public hearing, correct? Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you. This request is for $2.85 million from Capital Trust Fund reserves for public roads maintenance. The town's road system is comprised of more than 700 roads totaling 260 miles. Roadway systems are in a constant state of deterioration, and for that reason, adequate maintenance and reconstruction where necessary is essential to preserve this major capital asset. Analysis performed through the pavement management program shows a significant backlog of needed public road repairs. In addition, the town has a backlog of more than 250 locations where drainage improvements are required to protect public safety and prevent potential property damage. Recurring intense storms over the past several years have highlighted additional areas requiring storm damage attention. Through the pavement management program, our aim is to maintain the town's roads at an average road surface rating of 80 points out of 100 points or better. Currently, with historical funding, we have been able to maintain this goal with our most recent assessment in 2023 with a score of 79. This program is designed to combat the progressive deterioration of the town's roadway assets and provide stormwater management, system construction, and repairs. As you can see in the slides, depending on physical condition and analysis utilizing the town's pavement management program, the repairs may include one of several different approaches, including full-depth reconstruction, asphalt overlay, milling and paving, applying a chip seal surface layer, or crack sealing. In addition to surface repairs, improvement projects typically include installation or upgrading of drainage systems, curbing, and sidewalks where practicable. Other program elements include traffic calming, ADA accessibility engineering, permitting design, inspection, and materials testing. And this final slide, as I like to show every year, really exemplifies the adage famously penned by Benjamin Franklin in the 18th century, that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. The graph illustrates that road deterioration occurs very rapidly between 10 and 15 years of road life. So, if we can take preventative measures before the point of rapid deterioration, our costs will be just a fraction of the cost of a full construction of a roadway. So, in effect, we are able to provide a higher condition of roadway at a lower cost. Upon completion of the fiscal 2024 program, we will have undertaken the following work: mill and overlay portions of Main Street, Lumbert Mill Road, and Old Falmouth Road in Marsens Mills; mill and overlay portion of South County Road in Marsens Mills in Osterville; mill and overlay portion of Old Stage Road in Centerville and West Barnstable; mill and overlay portion of Santuit Newtown Road in Catuit; and reclaimed Old Post Road in Marsens Mills. In addition, we will have installed 30 drainage systems on various other roads. Chip sealing, crack sealing, and preventive maintenance will have also been completed on approximately two miles of roadway to extend their service life. In fiscal year '25, with these funds, we propose road rehabilitation work on Bay Lane Centerville, Dale Avenue Hyannis, Main Street Marsens Mills, and portions of Santuit Newtown Road, Eel River Road, and Parker Road in Osterville. Other roads may be substituted if necessary due to accelerated deterioration rates, unexpected damage, opportunities to address certain roads with other funding sources, or other factors. In addition, approximately 25 drainage systems are anticipated to be replaced. Chip sealing, crack sealing, and preventive maintenance are also planned for various roads townwide to extend their service life. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing this is a public hearing, I'm asking if anybody is here from the public to address this item? Anybody online? Seeing nobody, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Do we need roll call for that? No. All those in favor of closing public hearing? Public hearing is closed. Council discussion. Mr. Mendez, Council Mendez.
Thank you, President Penn. Now, I know the, you've been very clear on what we can do with privately, private roads that are commonly used by the town. that are commonly used by the town. In my precinct in particular, there's a lot of these private roads that are commonly used, is cut through, so on and so forth, that have serious drainage problems. Is there any way we can get some funds to address that?
The only way at this point that we could do it with town funds would be through the special legislation that you just mentioned about roads that are, connect one town road to another, and that are in continuous use as determined by the Town Council. And we have a list of about 40 roads in town that could qualify under that criteria. And that list was discussed at the last meeting. I think it was forwarded to the county councilors what those roads are. So over the next year, we can continue discussions with you all about if there are roads that you'd like to bring forth under this program for the next series of capital projects.
I wasn't at the last meeting, so.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel Tamish.
In the book, the total costs are projected as $3,850,000, as opposed to in the articles two.
That's correct. That's because the total amount of money that will be expended is 3.85 million. One million of that, it will be coming from our Chapter 90 grant program.
Counsel Schnapp, was that your question?
Yes, it was. I just have a follow-up. Last year, we did appropriate the 3.75. Did we not have the Chapter 90?
We didn't use it for that purpose last year. We used it for other purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Lucky.
Yeah, I had a question. You had mentioned that our average is, what, 79, and you're shooting for an 80. And I do applaud the objective criteria. What's our lowest road? If the average is 79, are we carrying some at a substantially lower number? Or, you know, what?
Yes, town engineer Griffin Bowden is with me, and he may, he may know the lowest road. I don't know, but there certainly are some that are lower than that.
Yeah, Griffin Bowden, town engineer. I don't actually know the lowest scoring road, unfortunately. There are some that are, that are very poor, right? And they do, they do weigh heavily on the score. Basically, what happens is it's a weighted average, right? So it's, if it's a very short road that scores as a 25, it's not going to really have significant impact. If it's a really long road that has 80, that has a score of 80, that's going to help our score, right? So it's really a weighted average based on length and condition. We take a systematic approach to identifying the roadways that we're going to improve through the program, looking at the data that we get every three years, and that gets updated annually. So every three years, we hire a consultant to literally drive every mile of roadway and get pictures every couple hundred feet, every hundred feet or so. And they, they score those based off the pictures that they, that they take along the way. And that's the systematic approach that we take in order to come up with that number. And we're always striving to get that number as high as possible. So that's how we develop our program.
Okay, then just one follow-up. Going back to the painting, I would assume that after these roads repaired, they're painted. Is that painting included in this, or is the painting in the painting program? How is, how is that put together?
Yes, when we do a new, when we restore a roadway, we would repaint it with actually thermoplastic, which lasts longer, but it doesn't last forever. It lasts two to, like, about three years until we then go through and paint. It just costs more, and it's, and it's more difficult to replace. So once that has passed its useful life, we would, we would transition to paint at that point.
Okay, so the painting piece is different than this?
That's right. It's regular maintenance. It's treated as regular maintenance.
Thank you.
Are we good? Counsel Turkelson.
The list that you mentioned, I'm not sure that I received that email. Do I just email you, Dan, to get a copy of that again?
I'll work through Cynthia and make sure it gets sent out again. I know it was discussed last week, but.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So counsel discussion seems to have concluded, so we'll take a vote. Roll call.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveck.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Great. Thank you. Counsel Mendez, do you want to read the next? Did I miss you, Counsel Starr? You did the last one? No, you could do this one. I'm sorry. 2024-117.
Thank you. I'd like to open a public hearing on item 2024-117, an appropriation order in the amount of $350,000 for funding the curb ramps and sidewalk ADA transition plan project as outlined in fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan with a roll call majority vote, full council.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor opening public hearing? Thank you. Rationale, please.
This project will repair or replace curb ramps and sidewalks at various locations around town where there is identified curb ramp and/or sidewalk nonconformance, including appropriate cross slopes, running slopes, dimensions, surface conditions, detectable warnings, et cetera, and to bring them into compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act and Massachusetts Architectural Access Board requirements. Title II of the Americans with Disability Act of 1990 specifically addresses the subject of making public services and public transportation accessible to those with disabilities. The Act applies to all facilities, including both facilities built before and after the date of the Act. A requirement of the program is for state and local government, public entities, or agencies to perform self-evaluations of their current facilities relative to the accessibility requirements of the Act. The agencies are then required to develop a transition plan and of any deficiencies, to address any deficiencies. The plan is intended to achieve the following: identify physical obstacles that limit the accessibility of facilities to individuals with disabilities; describe the methods to be used to make the facilities accessible; provide a schedule for making the access modifications; and identify the public officials responsible for implementation of the transition plan. The plan is required to be updated periodically until all accessibility barriers are removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here from the public to speak to this item? No. Anybody online? No. All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Counsel discussion. Counsel Clark.
Thank you very much, Director Santos. Is there any interface or interplay from the Disabilities Commission or members of the Disabilities Commission that, that are involved with this program?
Yes, absolutely. We will share our draft transition plan with them and get their input on, on what we're proposing.
Any other questions, comments? Counsel Turkelson.
So this is a new plan, Dan?
Yes.
And it's new to us because there's been change in legislation? We've been, or we're catching up? I'm just.
Yes, we were required to address it, and we've got, got to the point in the last several years where we decided to do a more formal, you know, step-by-step systematic way to identify all these issues, and then on an annual basis, appropriate funds and start picking away at these issues. Because the town is large, as you know, and there's a lot of these deficiencies, so it's going to take a while, but as long as we have a plan to get from point A to point B.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote.
Counselors, Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveck.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Counsel Mendez.
Bloom.
Oh, Bloom.
Yes.
Keep her honest. Sorry, Charlie. You all set?
Yes.
Should you put an exclamation point after that vote, please? Counsel Mendez, item 2024-118, please.
This is old business, item number 2024-118. Appropriation order in the amount of $135,000 for funding the monitoring and management plan for freshwater ponds project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan.
Okay, there's a motion to open the public hearing, and a second. All those in favor opening public hearing? All right. Rationale, please.
This project will fund the continuation of the water quality monitoring and management plan development program, which will allow the town to better understand sources that impair our freshwater ponds and to recommend solutions. The management plan is developed in a two-phase cycle. The first phase consists of monitoring all nutrient sources, including in-pond water quality, sediment nutrient release, stormwater inputs, and groundwater input, as well as dissolved oxygen phytoplankton composition, including cyanobacteria, and stream inputs when applicable. The second phase involves the development of a management plan report, which is included in this request, that will be presented following the completion of the monitoring, recommending solutions and cost estimates for restoring pond water quality and mitigating algae blooms. Many of the town's ponds are impaired. These water quality issues can cause pond closures and are impalatable to residents and visitors who utilize the pond for swimming, boating, fishing, and other recreational activities. Several citizens groups have approached the town looking for solutions to poor water quality in freshwater ponds, in particular for cyanobacteria. In many cases, the specific cause is unknown or not fully quantified, preventing the town from understanding which sources need to be remedied in order to restore the pond's health. Through these management plan reports, the town aims to take a holistic approach to understanding the issues that impair our freshwater resources, and ultimately, how to appropriately manage them based on their unique characteristics. To date, the Shubal Pond, Long Pond, Marson's Mills, Lovell's Pond, and Lake Wauquaket and Berse's Pond management plans have been funded, along with continued sample collection in the spring and the fall at 25 great ponds through the Pond and Lake Stewards Program, or the PALS program. It is envisioned that this will be a recurring project for developing pond and lake management plans, which will ultimately be used to guide the town in future management and implementation of solutions for its freshwater resources. Fiscal year 25 funds are anticipated to be used to perform water quality monitoring and development of a management plan report for Long Pond and Centerville. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody here to speak to this item? No. Anybody online? No. Okay. We'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Moved and seconded. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, counsel discussion. Counsel Tamish.
I've received several emails in support of this, obviously. Is this one of the projects, Dan, that you mentioned that UMass would be funding further? So UMass would actually be doing the ones that are doing this project?
That's correct, yes.
Great. Thank you.
Counsel Schnapp.
Thank you, President Penn, and thank you, Dan, and your staff. This has been an incredible program for really not that much money, and I'm very hopeful that the management plans, once they're implemented, will clean up our ponds. So thank you.
Counsel Lucky.
Thank you. My question is, do we work with any of our local entities, like the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition? Are they involved in this? Is this a joint effort?
Well, we certainly do, and most of the ponds do have pond associations, as well as the overall Barnstable Clean Water Coalition, and we definitely are working with them. We, we gain benefit from the work they do, as well as we share our work with them, so it's definitely.
And is this data, I know when I opened the paper in the summer, we hear water quality of all the ponds. Is this, this data, or is that somebody else providing that?
There's additional, that's mostly the cyanobacteria program that is being conducted by the Association to Preserve Cape Cod, and then they announce that information, and it gets in the newspaper and on their website to inform the public where it might be dangerous or that they should be wary of having their pets go in the water, or, or individuals as well. But it is a different program.
Okay, so it's, so the data you're collecting here is more towards a long-term treatment or how to respond to the lessening quality of the pond?
Exactly.
Okay.
Counsel Turkelson.
Once you've collected the data, and then you're making the management plan, are we also then, on the backside of that, monitoring the response of our water to that? And if so, how long, or is that going to be in perpetuity, we'll be monitoring those waters?
Yes, I believe it will be in perpetuity, but, but we currently do that regularly, and we will continue to monitor to make sure that our solutions have been effective.
Counsel Clark.
Thank you. I'm proud of the longstanding relationship we have with UMass for all the, all the lab work and collection. Do we do any, utilize any of the student interns from Cape Cod Community College?
We, we use interns, we use volunteers, we use staff, we use administrative people, whoever we can get. We can always use more, but yes, we're, we invite whoever wants to participate because it, it takes quite a bit of work.
So if people wanted to volunteer, they could contact your office?
Yes, certainly.
You good? Okay. No more discussion, so we are ready for vote. Madam Clark.
Counselors, Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveck.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
All right. Item number 2024-119. Counsel Crowe.
Thank you, President Penn. This is item old business, open for a public hearing with a roll call vote of two-thirds vote of the full council. It's item number 2024-119. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of $685,000 for funding the raised crosswalks on Main Street, Osterville Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan, as written.
Been moved and seconded. Open the public hearing. All those in favor opening public hearing? Say aye. Okay. Rationale, please.
This project is for the installation of raised pedestrian crosswalks at up to four locations on Main Street and Osterville Village. Work is similar to what's been done in Marson's Mills Village and Barnstable Village, which has been viewed successfully. Raised pedestrian crossings will make individuals entering the roadways more visible to motorists and therefore improve pedestrian safety. A secondary benefit of the raised crosswalks may be speed mitigation throughout the village center. The work includes pavement, sidewalk, and curb modifications, accessibility improvements, and flashing beacons. We have begun working with the village to identify the best locations for the crosswalks, as well as other important pedestrian safety and speed mitigation improvements. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? I think these guys are getting excited about it, actually. Sounds like they're in favor of it. Is there anybody online? No. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. And there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Counsel discussion. Counsel Tamish.
Is there a plan on these crosswalks to use that brick overlay type of thing that they do? Because it doesn't seem like that holds up very well. Because it doesn't seem like that holds up very well.
Well, we haven't designed these yet, so we'll be going through that analysis. As if they haven't been effective in the other villages, we may seek an alternative. I don't know if town engineer has thought about that for these particular ones yet. I'll turn to him and let him respond.
Yeah, I mean, we budgeted for decorative installations. Those installations are expected to have about a five to 10-year life expectancy before they need to be replaced. The actual decorative texture is on the top, so we budgeted for that, but certainly we'll be working with the village about all those levels of details.
I know in Barnstable Village, a lot of it's coming up.
That's right, and a lot of that is from scraping, too, from people may go over it a little too quickly.
You only do that once.
Yeah, exactly.
No, they don't.
But yeah, they do expect that they're expected to have a five to 10-year life expectancy, so.
In Osterville, they drive much slower.
Any other comments? Council Crowe.
I just want to say that these are sorely needed, especially in the crosswalk you see right there in town. A lot of the cars get very close to that crosswalk, and you can't see somebody starting out across the path there. It's a good start. These things, I find, are extremely expensive, but it's sorely needed, especially coming in and out of the village, so it would do to slow down traffic especially, so appreciate it. Thanks.
Council Turkelson.
The extra $6 million for future fiscal years, those are just for other crosswalks outside of Osterville, moving into other towns?
I think it's a typo.
It is, I'm sorry.
I was just, yeah, thank you, I just didn't know where that was going to.
Council Lucky.
Yeah, I had a question, just for future planning, somewhat, she was saying that perhaps that was going to be for the future. How does a road qualify for getting one of these? What is the criteria that would be used to say that a road was authorized to have one of these raised crosswalks?
Well, we've been focusing this work on the village centers, where there are predominance of pedestrians, and as we work on these roads, we consider this as an upgrade, an improvement, and we will continue to do that as we work through other roads or areas where there is a predominance of pedestrians, that we need to make sure that we're making them more visible. For example, if there's sightline issues, and that's why the flashing beacons are included as part of this, and these aren't something that's always going on, they're pedestrian-activated, so the people who live in the area don't have to see this flashing all night long, only when someone's crossing the road. But we found those to be very helpful as an addition to these. Some villages in the past have been a little leery about it, but I think in the end, they find them a real safety improvement. And I think if you drive around the Cape, you see more and more of these, particularly with where the rail trail, the bike path is, and those are actually motion sensor detector type, so they pick up the bicycles coming and then they flash, but they get your attention.
Okay, my only question with the schools coming up was West Main Street, and I don't know what the status of the Wendy's is, but I know a lot of the kids go to the Dunkin' Donuts, they go to the Star Market. I just don't know if West Main has any potential to be evaluated for this.
Not currently, it may in the future, though, as we work on that project.
I think discussion's all set. We'll take a vote. Roll call.
Councilors, Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Verdic.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Okay, next is item number 2024-120. Councilor Tamish.
Item number 2024-120 for a public hearing, roll call, two-thirds vote. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of $1,750,000 for funding the Channel dredging project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan as written.
Second.
Motion is second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Hearing is open. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? No. Nobody online? No. Okay. I'm sorry. Rationale.
This project involves the ongoing design, permitting, and maintenance dredging of town-owned navigational channels. The town completed a comprehensive dredge plan in 2017 based on surveyed conditions and historic dredging frequencies. The plan identifies dredge needs in multiple channels during this five-year CIP. These channels provide important navigational access for significant numbers of recreational and commercial boats, as well as regulatory and emergency response vessels. The failure to maintain these channels can result in very dangerous conditions, potentially threatening the safety of our residents and posing a serious risk of damage to vessels. In fiscal year 25, we plan to dredge the Blishe Point Boat Ramp and the Barnstable Harbor Mid-Entrance Channel and conduct permitting activities for the West Bay Channel and the East Bay Centerville River Channels. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Schnepp.
Would you have public?
Yeah, we asked for public, but this, you know, we can close it later. It's all right.
All right. Thank you, President Penn. Thank you, Dan. I know that when we embarked on this program, we were able to receive significant grant funds. Do you anticipate any grant funds for these projects coming up?
I don't know that I anticipate them, but we will continue to ask for them, and we've been very successful with the Ktuit project in getting a significant amount of grant funding, so I'm hopeful.
Okay. Follow-up. Will the Barnstable County dredge be the primary dredging unit that does this work?
Not for the two projects that are listed here, because they're projects that require mechanical dredging, which is not the type of dredging they perform, so we'll be hiring an independent contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Council Starr.
Thank you. My question is about, why is this a loan and some of the appropriations aren't? Is it just because it's so large?
I'm going to let Director Millen answer that question.
He's not here.
He's not here?
Okay.
Or Town Manager Els.
He's not here either.
I'll give it a shot.
It's fine.
Good try.
Try, yeah.
It's basically based on the amount of money.
Yeah, it's so much.
So this is $1,700,000. That's a significant amount of money, and I think we, and if I'm wrong, they'll correct me at some point.
Any other discussion questions? Council Lucky.
Yeah, since you said this is the mechanical dredging, that leads me to believe that this stuff on the bottom is not ideal. What do you do with the dredge? We can't use it for fill anywhere in our beaches or anything because of that? How is it disposed of, then?
Yeah, that's correct, and these two particular channels are not authorized for beneficial reuse of the sediment, so like we like out in Ktuit, right, a couple months last month, we used the county dredge, which was able to hydraulically dredge the material and place it on the beach and beneficially reuse that material. It's because it was authorized for it, because it was sandy material that didn't have any contaminants in it. This material is not, has not been found to have contaminants in it, however, it is silty, so it's not identified as appropriate to go on a beneficially reused area, usually a beach. So what we do is, it has to be disposed of at an upland facility, so an approved facility by DEP to accept this type of material.
Reinforcement has arrived.
The cavalry has ridden in.
I think the question was, why is this a loan?
Director Millen.
Due to the size of the expenditure, we borrow for this type.
Yeah.
You got it right.
You have a new apprentice here, he did good.
I pay attention.
All right. Seeing, he came downstairs for that, I love it. All right. There's nobody here still in the public hearing, so we're going to close the public hearing. I'll take a motion to do that in a second. Okay, all those in favor? Is there any other discussion by the council? I think our questions have been answered. Roll call vote, two-thirds.
Councilors, Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Verdic.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
12 yes.
It's contagious.
Okay. Council Bloom.
We have item 2024-121. It's old business, open for public hearing, with a roll call, two-thirds vote, full council. This is an appropriation and loan order in the amount of $580,000 for funding the bulkhead improvement project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan.
Motion in a second. All those in favor opening public hearing? Aye. Anybody opposed? No. Okay, we'll hear the rationale, please.
In 2023, the town retained Collins Engineering to inspect all eight of the town-owned bulkheads. To date, inspection reports have been provided for three of the bulkheads. This year's project would fund improvements recommended in Collins Engineering's report at four of the bulkheads: Barnstable Harbor Marina, Gateway Marina, Pleasant Street, and West Bay Road. Funds may be used for improvements at other bulkheads if excess funds are available or if priorities are modified by the results of the remaining inspection reports. The inspection reports identified maintenance and improvements necessary to extend the useful life of the bulkheads and prevent more significant capital expenses. These improvements include, but are not limited to, weepole improvements, gangway slip and trip mitigation, application of protective coatings, further testing, bolt improvements, cathodic protection systems, pile repairs or replacements, ladder replacements, wood rot repairs, concrete repairs, and repairing damaged appurtenances. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Nobody online. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. All those in favor? Oh, we need a motion in a second. Okay. We got that in here. All those in favor? Thank you. Public hearing's closed. Council discussion. Council Turkelson.
If we have three reports completed and we're going to be planning for four, how do we know, I guess the math doesn't add up to me on that, or we just have a preliminary report that let us put the fourth one in?
Since we developed the text for this, we've received all eight reports.
Thank you.
Council Clark.
And thank you for that. And if you plan to spend $580,000 for fiscal year 2025 for four of the bulkheads, and there's four more to do, why is it less money in 2027?
That's because there's less challenges with the other four bulkheads. So actually, we were pleasantly surprised with the inspection reports that we received back. We hadn't done a systematic inspection program in a number of years, so a couple years ago, we requested that funding, and we were able to inspect all of our bulkheads, and they've all come back with longer-than-anticipated useful life, which is great news, as well as smaller improvements than we were expecting. Really, a lot of the things we're going to be focusing on is preventative maintenance to continue to extend the useful life. So we prioritize the ones that had the most efficiencies in this ask. They were also the first ones we asked about because we anticipated the most efficiencies. The largest item is Barnstable Harbor's bulkhead, actually, and that biggest ticket item in this program is a cathodic protection for it to try to just prevent rusting and extend the useful life.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Council Bloom.
So I was wondering how long it'll take and what kind of inconvenience there might be with commercial or private boating.
I'm not anticipating significant lengths for these, because there are really rehabs. It's not like we're rebuilding the bulkheads with this effort. These are maintenance items, so some of the coatings will take a little, will take a couple weeks. We'll try to, we'll try to schedule those, obviously, during off-peak seasons, to the extent possible. Some of the coatings, they obviously are weather-dependent, but we'll work through that to minimize disruption, but the program in general is not an intrusive program because it is routine maintenance and not replacing the bulkheads, and we're hoping we can avoid that indefinitely.
One site at a time, or will you tackle all three at once?
Yeah, we'll probably, we're anticipating we'll probably put out a contract for the four, and it'll be up to the contractor's schedule how they want to approach it. My guess is they'll jump around from one, finish it, and then move to the next, but that will be their prerogative.
All right. So we'll take roll call vote.
Count, excuse me, Councilors, Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Verdic.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you. Next item is 2024-122. Council Turkelson.
This is an item of old business, open for a public hearing, requiring a roll call majority vote of the full council. Item 2024-122, appropriation order in the amount of $256,000 for funding the Bay Shore Boat Ramp Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan as written.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Thank you. Hearing is open. Rationale, please.
The Bay Shore Boat Ramp, Bay Shore Road Boat Ramp and associated parking area provide important access to mooring fields within Hyannis Harbor and are heavily used by the boating population in the neighborhood. The existing asphalt ramp is deteriorated and needs replacement. This appropriation request is for design and permitting to replace the existing Bay Shore Road Boat Ramp. The proposed work will include the adjacent parking area and improved stormwater management systems. Engineering design plans and environmental permitting will be completed prior to a future request for construction. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Nobody online? Okay. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Council discussion. There isn't any. That's in my precinct. I just hope that the parking lot, when it's redone, is clearly for boats and trailers and not for Nantucket passengers. Just a little comment, just saying. It's an issue.
I'll relay that to the appropriate authorities.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Council Turkelson.
If, when do you anticipate that you would be coming forward to bring the monies to fund this project in order to have this start?
It's probably, will be next year.
Okay, great. I've used this ramp, it's a nightmare.
Convenient location, but a nightmare. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? I guess we're ready for a vote.
Councilors, Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Verdic.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Thank you. Council Schnapp. Item number 2024-123.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an item of old business requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority vote of the full council. Item number 2024-123, appropriation order in the amount of $50,000 for funding the West Bay Breakwater Project outlined in the fiscal year 2025, 2029 Capital Improvement Plan.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of opening the public hearings, say aye. Thank you. Rationale.
Thank you. A report on the existing West Bay Breakwater, prepared by Ocean and Coastal Consultants, published in March 2014, recommended a series of repairs to improve the integrity of the breakwater. The proposed repairs include resetting the armor stones currently displaced and adding a second layer of armor stones designed to accommodate the 100-year storm that would increase the thickness and soften the side slopes of the breakwaters. This proposed project would reevaluate the breakwater and provide updated recommendations. Numerous storms, heavy seas, and constant wave action have damaged the breakwaters that protect both sides of the channel entering West Bay from Nantucket Sound. The integrity of the structure is now compromised. The breakwaters have lost stones and have settled. These breakwaters provide safe navigation in the area and prevent shoaling of the entrance channel. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Anybody online? No. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Moved in second. All in favor? Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Council discussion. Council Tamish.
Would this be done before or after the dredging?
This current request is for an evaluation. So that would be to be determined. Really, we felt that we needed a fresh look at this because the last evaluation was about a decade ago. So that we could update recommendations, take into account sea level rise, take into account what's occurred to date, and really just get an expert to look at this structure, just these structures, to make sure that we bring forward the right recommendation before we start a design effort. So we wouldn't be starting the design effort with this. It would be an evaluation to inform next steps.
Okay.
Just to be clear, you're evaluating both sides? Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Take a vote, please.
Counselors. Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yeah.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you. Council Ludkey. Item number 2024-124.
Okay, this is item 2024-124. It's old business, has a public hearing and a roll call majority vote of the full council. Appropriation order in the amount of $150,000 for funding the Blish Point Long-Term Solution Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029 Capital Improvement Plan.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Aye. Hearing is open. Is there anybody here to? Oh, we have a rationale.
The existing Blish Point Dune and Sediment Basin Protection is a series of core tubes that were installed as a temporary solution in 2014. The unarmored coastal bank at Milway Beach has experienced severe erosion on about a two-year frequency interval in recent years due to severe storms, extreme high tides, and storm surges. This may be contributing to the recurring need to dredge accumulated sand and sediment from the Barnstable Harbor Entrance Channel with regular frequency, as well as to replace the sand on the beach and the dunes. A study by Woods Hole Group recommends a stone revetment as the best engineering solution, though current regulations don't allow for a revetment to be installed at this location. DPW continues to work with the Woods Hole Group and regulators to develop a long-term strategy for this issue. This project will provide design and permitting of a long-term solution for the dune. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Nobody present and nobody online. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion in a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Council discussion. Council Crowe.
Dan, can you tell me, on the left picture is there, is that a stone revetment?
On the, in the foreground?
Yes, it is.
Yes, that's on the right side of the beach.
So you want to do the same thing if possible? Okay. Thanks.
I notice construction isn't going to happen for several years down the line.
That's based on our overall schedule for our project. That's when it, yeah.
Everything could change between now and then, depending on storms.
Well, the interim solution is to add sand to protect that existing dune.
Right, is there any other discussion on this item? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yeah.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you. Item number 2024-125. Council Burdick, please.
Thank you. I move to open a public hearing for item 2024-125. It's an item of old business. An appropriation order in the amount of $240,000 for funding the Automatic Beach Gate Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029 Capital Improvements Plan.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Opening the hearing? Thank you. Rationale, please.
This project will replace manual gates with automatically controlled gates. Currently, access to beaches is manually controlled. So a town employee must actually drive to each beach location to lock and unlock the gates. Automatic operation will ensure that all gates are opened and locked at the same time and will save on the cost of personnel for this labor-intensive operation as well as motor vehicle fuel. The public beaches to receive automatic gates under this proposal include Calmas Beach, Koval's Beach, and Craigville Beach. The town has received many complaints about nefarious activities at these three locations. In response, the town has expanded the season of securing all gates, I'm sorry, all gated town beaches from the middle of May through the middle of October. Historically, we secured beaches when they were fully staffed in late June through Labor Day. This past off-season, we also expanded securing the gates at Calmas Beach, Koval's Beach, and Craigville Beach from October through May. The opening and closing at these locations were subcontracted to a private security company at a cost of $49,000. Installing automatic gates would eliminate these additional costs for securing and opening and help protect these assets. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Nobody online? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Moved in second. All those in favor? Thank you. Council discussion. Council Tamish.
Dan, how do you plan on securing the beaches at night? In other words, at nine o'clock, there might be 20 cars parked at Craigville. How do you get those cars out of there at nine o'clock in order to lock the gate? All this is going to be done automatically.
Plan is to have adequate signage and notification of people that use the facility that these gates will lock at nine o'clock. And if they get locked in there, which is what happens now, still, people do get locked in there now even, that they'll have to notify the police department to release them.
Usually, when the gate, when the person comes around to lock the gates, you chase everybody out. So I mean, that, that usually works pretty well.
But we always can't get everyone.
Right. We try. There's usually one or two left. But now, there won't be really any incentive because there won't be a physical presence to make sure they're out of the lot other than a sign.
And the problem with that method is there's a tremendous amount of effort that's required to do that. Plus, the time it takes, you only have one person doing this. So they have to do one beach, whatever, half an hour to get everyone out of there and go to the next. It's very labor-intensive. And the thinking was that we would try this approach to automate it and that hopefully enough people will understand that they're going to get stuck if.
Or drive through the barrier.
Yeah. Okay.
Council Schnapp.
Council Tamish and I are thinking along the same lines. Is there any way that you could enhance the gates that maybe there's, at a half hour before closing, there's lights that go on? Or is there a way? I'm just curious how this is going to actually work.
There will be a design process, and we'll talk through all these things and try to figure out the best approach that, you know, works for the majority of the users as well as staff. So we don't have a final plan for this. There'll be a design process.
Can you adjust the time in which the gates are locked during the season?
Council Turkelson.
Is there a get-out-of-jail fee when we have to call the police to have somebody let out?
I don't know.
Police just show up and unlock?
Or if Chris Canelo?
I mean, I'm just thinking of the resources it takes.
There's no fee. There's no charge.
I'm just thinking the resources it takes to. And I'm assuming if we had one person locked in there and the police were to go down, they would do a little lap and get everybody else that's out at the same time as best they could.
I would think so.
Council Mendez.
Actually, I can answer that question because when I was a teenager.
You've been locked in?
I got locked in C Street Beach. There was about five of us at a party across the street. We all went to get our cars and, you know, we had to call the police and come let us out. So there was no charge, though. Thank God it was my father, or he killed me.
That was then, this is now, so. All righty. Council Tamish?
Just one additional comment. You know, I think it's great in the morning to be able to open them all up. I don't want to put Sergeant Fulham on the spot, but I don't know if he had a thought on it. But from my past experience, it's a battle getting people out of there at night.
Understood. We will continue to work with Community Services and the chief and try to come up with a compromise that is the best solution. I don't think there's any one great solution to this. Unfortunately, we have to lock these beaches for what goes on. And we're trying to come up with the most effective way to do it that's cost-effective as well. We'll continue to work on it and share and improve as we go along.
I'm sure other communities obviously have these at beach parking lots. I wonder what they do. Council Ludkey.
Yeah, I was just going to, you know, build on what Council Schnapp had said. I know out in the Midwest, having lived there, they have giant voice systems for tornadoes and stuff. You know, it might be nice to have, I don't know. It just, I agree with what's been said here. I think there's going to be a huge burden on the police with this, especially without a town, folks, unless there's tremendous signage and, again, a giant voice system that would give people a warning. Because people are out on the beach. I've been locked in, too. And it's really annoying. It's, yeah.
Yes, I think the loud announcements, you know, we can program that and have that. Basically, that's what we're doing when we have someone go through there, is they're announcing this and letting people know it's closing and as loud as we can. But if it's automated, like the gate would be, then I think that would be an additional help to clear the beach. Did you have something to offer, Mark?
Yeah, part of.
This is Mark Maranaccio, Town Architect.
Yeah, Mark Maranaccio, thank you. Part of the analysis, we'll be looking at, are there sensors on the inside of the gate to let vehicles out? Will those sensors be strong enough or weak enough so that somebody on a bicycle couldn't sneak in and then open the gate for their friends? So all of that is part of, like, the analysis. Will there be an enunciation? Will there be an alarm? This is kind of a pilot program that was put forward by Community Services. So part of the design process will be worked, to work through all those scenarios and issues and to try to come up with a solution.
Council Turkelson.
Have we looked at other communities and how their systems work and the pros and cons of certain things that have been put in other systems?
Public Works hasn't, but I can't speak for, go ahead, Mr. Canelo. He may have done that.
Chris Canelo, Director of Community Services. Good evening. Yes, we did look at several other locations throughout the Cape. There is only a limited amount of secured locations at national seashores. But they don't have the volume and the nefarious activity and the history that we have. And to Mark's point, this was for these three locations as a pilot. Also, with all the implement that Maranaccio had given us, we're currently spending $48,000 off-season to close these three locations. So to your point, Vice President Tamish, if we only utilize these to open in the morning when there's a certain fish running at five in the morning instead of having staff come in and do it, there's a significant savings. So this is an opportunity for us to kind of pilot a program and in having these discussions with other communities, they're kind of looking to us to lead the way as well.
Thank you. Council Ludkey.
Yeah, just one more thing. I mean, we don't want people in at night. So is this gate programmable to let people out but not in? That kind of thing? Is it programmable to be, you know, smart enough to recognize the direction of travel?
That's what we're going to look at. There are gates that do that and.
Because that would be nice. That would alleviate a lot of the work of the police.
As Mark was saying about, we don't want to have it tripped by bicycles. And so it's got to be well-thought-out.
Yeah, okay.
But yes, those are possibilities.
Sounds like you're looking at all the angles. All right. Are we ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Counselors. Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yeah.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Yes.
Burdick. Yes.
Clark. Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Council Burdick, we're going to work our way back against. So why don't you do 2024-126?
It's exciting, all right, great.
You get two in a row.
Sounds good to me. I move to open a public hearing for item 2024-126, appropriation order in the amount of $250,000 for funding the Town Hall Elevator Replacement Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029 Capital Improvement Plan.
We have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Nope. Rationale, please.
This project will provide design services for the installation of a new elevator system
This project will provide design services for the installation of a new elevator system and other building improvements at the Barnstable Town Hall. The need to replace this elevator is based on the recommendation from a recent elevator evaluation by Siska Hennessy Group. In addition to the elevator installation, this project will make improvements to the interior office layouts within the Town Hall. Specifically, planning and development, legal department, and town manager's offices will be reconfigured to optimize space utilization and enhance workflow efficiency. This is the final phase of a multi-year project to upgrade the Town Hall mechanical systems and renovate and reconfigure workspaces. The hydraulic cylinder on the Town Hall elevator cannot be inspected. There is concern that the underground environment surrounding the Town Hall presents severe, I'm sorry, several potential threats to hydraulic cylinders. The presence of alkaline substances, sulfur, salt, electrical current, and other chemical agents in the soil and groundwater can lead to cylinder corrosion and failure. To mitigate this issue, the project will incorporate modern methods and devices designed to control cylinder corrosion. The project will ensure compliance with the National Elevator Code, which mandates the use of polyvinyl chloride for the piston shield in new elevator installations and replacements. This requirement was introduced in 2003 to enhance safety and durability of hydraulic cylinder elevators. Adhering to the National Elevator Code is not only a best practice, but also a legal requirement. Failure to comply with these safety standards poses significant liabilities and risks. By proactively implementing these standards, we mitigate potential legal issues and ensure the safety of our residents and visitors who use the Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public here to speak to this item? Nobody present and nobody online, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Moved in second, and all in favor? Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Council discussion. Council Crowe.
Seeing as I used to be a delivery driver, can you make sure that the speed is the same speed as this old thing going up and down? It's one of the fastest elevators I've ever seen. And time is money.
Never heard that before. Any other discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote, please.
Councilors. Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you. Item number 2024-127, Council Ludke, please.
Okay, thank you. This is old business, a public hearing with a roll call, two-thirds vote of the full council. 2024-127 appropriation loan order in the amount of $619,000 for funding the school administration building mechanical upgrades as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029 Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Council Crowe. Okay. Rationale, please. Oh, we didn't vote, did we? Sorry about that, I'm getting punchy. Okay, all those in favor opening public hearing, say aye. Thank you. Thank you.
This project represents the next stage of work on mechanical upgrades to the school administration building. The proposal includes a new 250 kilowatt emergency generator and associated electrical connections. Constructed in 1897 and remodeled in the 1960s and the 1980s, many building systems at the school administration building are outdated and in need of improvements. Funding for mechanical system improvements was originally broken into four stages at the request of the Finance Department back in 2018. Stage one included life safety and emergency mechanical upgrades. Stage two included HVAC improvements. Stage three, the elevator replacement, and stage four, the installation of an emergency generator. The school administration building serves as a critical hub for several essential municipal departments, including the Barnstable Schools Administration, Human Resources, Building, Health, Inspeccional Services, and the Conservation Division. The need to maintain uninterrupted operations of these departments, especially during power outages caused by storms or other emergencies, is paramount. Therefore, the installation of a 250-kilowatt standby generator is a necessary component of this project. Previous work accomplished includes head-end mechanical equipment installation in 2021 and design of a new mechanical distribution system in 2023. Elevator replacement work is in design and will be added to the mechanical distribution project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here from the public to speak to this item? Anybody online? No. Nobody present for that? I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. It's been moved, seconded. All those in favor closing public hearing? Thank you. Council discussion. Council Ludke.
I just wanted to say I'm a huge fan of all of these projects. I love that these buildings have been maintained. They've retained their original outdoor look. The inside still has some really nice features from when they were built, and I think it shows what can be done when you work with what you have, some beautiful historic buildings, and you modernize them to bring, you know, what we need to do our work today. So I really appreciate, I love that on the first floor, one of the offices has an old fireplace, you know. It's just, it's really cool, and I really appreciate the work you do to work within the constraints you have and do what we need to do.
Council Ludke, your comments just made the town architect very happy. He works among a lot of engineers and struggles to get those kind of points to us. Thank you.
Well, his work is evident, and I can share, I was an architect and worked among many engineers, so I know that it's challenging at times, so, thank you.
All of the above. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, I guess we'll take a vote.
Councilors. Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom. Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
That's 11 yes.
Okay. We'll take a break soon, but we got a few more to do first, okay? So, Council Schnapp, item number 2024-128. Page 18.
Thank you, President Penn. This is an item of old business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority vote of the full council. Item number 2024-128 appropriation order in the amount of $51,000 for funding the Marine and Environmental Affairs Building Mechanical Upgrades Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, 2029 Capital Improvement Plan.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. Rationale, please.
This project identifies, addresses the design of the mechanical system at the Marine and Environmental Affairs Building on Finney's Lane, which needs replacement. The current heating and cooling system is outdated and inefficient, leading to excessive energy consumption and operational costs. Replacing it with modern, energy-efficient equipment will result in substantial long-term cost savings. This project aims to enhance energy efficiency, improve indoor air quality, and ensure reliable temperature control within the facility. The existing system includes two forced hot air furnaces, one of which requires ductwork replacement. This project will also include the installation of air conditioning, new furnaces, condenser units, and an energy recovery ventilator for makeup air. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Anybody online? No. Okay, I would entertain a motion and a second to close public hearing. Moved in seconded. All those in favor? Public hearing is now closed. Council discussion. Council Tamish.
A little bit off the subject, but has there been a space needs study done for the MEA building? I mean, that building's been there a long time, it's a metal building, and they're pretty cramped in there. Has there been any kind of an analysis of what they need over there?
It is kind of off the subject.
There hasn't been a formal analysis. I know there have been discussions over the years with the director, and he's here and may wish to add more to this, but at this point, there's really been no formal study.
Any discussion on the item at hand? Council Starr.
Thank you. A quick question. Are you planning to put in heat pumps in this building? Or you'll put in, replace it with gas furnaces?
Yeah, as part of the design, we'll do an analysis on that, based on what utilities are there and what we think the load will be. I mean, I know there's a push to move to electric as much as possible.
Okay. No, I applaud the energy recovery ventilating system.
Yeah, basically, the furnaces we're looking at are from 1987, I believe, so--
Yeah, it's time to. Thank you.
Council Turkelson.
Thank you, President Penn. There's also a future item, so maybe this is off-topic, but just along the lines of Council Tamish's thought, is, are we just trying to put like a cap on a bad tooth that's just gonna need to be a greater replacement? It's like, how much money are we putting on something that, is it structurally sound that we want to continue to invest money into this?
Actually, this project, like many of the ones we undertake, are phased, and this is at the end stages of the work on this facility. We've remodeled and put a new entrance on it and put accessibility improvements to it and renovated the restroom, so we're investing in a facility that we believe has a long future life for us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Other discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilors. Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Okay, we're gonna take a break right after this item, okay? We like even numbers for breaks. So item number 2024-129. Is that Council Turkelson reading that?
It's an item of old business, referred to a public hearing with a roll call majority vote of the full council. Item number 2024-129 appropriation order in the amount of $72,000 for funding the Barnstable Adult Community Center Mechanical Upgrades Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2029 Capital Improvement Plan.
Right. It's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Thank you. Rationale, please.
The Barnstable Adult Community Center plays a crucial role in enhancing the quality of life for the residents of Barnstable. However, the existing natural gas-fired furnaces have reached the end of their useful life, and it's time to undertake the heating system replacement with a variable refrigerant flow electric heating and ductwork upgrade project. Variable refrigerant flow electric heating systems offer improved energy performance, reduced carbon footprint, and long-term energy cost savings. This project is for the design work for replacing the existing natural gas-fired furnaces with a state-of-the-art variable refrigerant flow electric heating system, along with comprehensive ductwork upgrades. Moreover, this project includes replacing the existing Mitsubishi ductless system for improved heating and cooling performance. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Nobody online, nobody in the room. I'd entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Motion and second. All those in favor? Public hearing is now closed. Council discussion. Council Clark.
Thank you very much, President Penn. I noticed the source of funding says general fund reserves and proceeds from sale of property. So what sale of property is anticipated, please?
There is a, there is a fund that has money in it that's from the previous sale of properties, and that's the fund that's being utilized for this project, and I don't know if Mark Millen has gone back upstairs, but--
Yeah, that's okay. No, that's all right.
I'm gonna go two for two, I think.
Thank you.
It makes sense. We like if the theory makes sense.
Actually, a number of these projects for this building are being funded from that source.
Sale, you believe it's sale of property in that, on that--
No, that had already happened.
Oh, that--
Yes.
The balance, the balance exists.
There's a reserve fund.
Yeah.
That's--
Understood, thank you.
Got it. Council Ludke.
My question is just with your analysis, do we, or have we ever looked at geothermal for any of our facilities? It seems like there's a lot of space out there at that center.
I believe at HYCC, they did look at geothermal for that project years ago, but we haven't for the smaller facilities at all. With this one project, we've actually gone through with our tech, and this was his recommendation based on the system, but we have a design process, so we can look at that as part of that process.
Pretty much to the second.
Good evening.
Director Millen.
Yes, question, I missed the question, sorry.
The question, I think, has been answered. There was a question about the source of the funding for this item, which was from the sale of property. So the question was, what property is gonna be sold? And the answer was, by Mr. Santos, that the balance already exists from previous sales.
Correct, that's correct. Two for two, Dan.
You've done well educating him over the years.
Stop going away.
All right. Any other discussion? No. We'll vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilors. Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Okay, we're gonna take a break. Probably about 15 minutes, we'll be back at about, according to that clock. Let me see. 20 of? What? 25 of? We'll negotiate.
This project aims to install a handicap wrap that adheres to accessibility standards while also preserving the historical significance of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Anybody online? No? All right, so I will entertain a motion in a second to close the public hearing. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor closing the hearing? Thank you. Counsel discussion. No discussion. All righty. Everybody's eating. This is good. Should have thought of this before. We'll get to a vote, please.
Counselors. Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
It's 12 yes.
Thank you. Counselor Tamish, item number 2024-131.
This is a public hearing. Roll call majority vote for item number 2024-131, an appropriation order in the amount of $90,300 for the Mosswood Cemetery Building Improvements Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029, capital improvement plan as written.
We have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Rationale, please.
Mosswood Cemetery in Kootawatt are largest cemetery, and location of the town cemetery administration staff has a single inadequate restroom that is used by employees, visitors, and mourners while they conduct business at the office and attend burial services. This project is for the design and permitting of, in addition to the existing building, which will add a public accessible entrance, restroom, and an employee locker room with shower to the facility, as well as to improve handicap access to the building.
Thank you. Seeing this is a public hearing, is there anybody here from the public to speak to this item? Nobody online? Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Moved and seconded. All in favor closing public hearing? Thank you. Counsel discussion. I think this is long overdue. I had a question, actually, of why two years later does the construction happen after this? Design and testing. I've heard a lot of comments just about the needs out there, so...
It's just that we try to balance our workload. So we're designing and putting together construction drawings and doing construction. So just the way we've worked out the workload, that it would be too much to add that to next year's ask, and so we put it out.
So if something else gets delayed, maybe this will get pushed up or something like that? Be flexible.
And we always, once we submit the capital program in October, it gets revisited by the committee that looks at it, by the town manager's office, and things, priorities do shift, so...
Okay. Any discussion? No? Okay. Vote, please. Roll call.
Counselors. Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
12 yes.
All right. Item number 2024-132, Counsel Crowe, please.
Thank you, President Penn. It's an item of old business, open to bug the hearing. A roll call, two-thirds majority vote. It's item number 2024-132. It's an appropriation loan order in the amount of $618,759 for the town office relocation project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029, capital improvement plan as written.
Motion in a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Aye. Nobody oppose? Good. Rationale, please.
The town of Barnstable is in the process of consolidating and relocating offices from 200 Main Street into the school administration building and the Barnstable Town Hall. The relocation will allow the town to dispose of the 200 Main Street facility, which has been determined to be no longer needed for current or anticipated operations. Physical improvements to the school administration building are needed to accommodate the relocation. Many divisions have already been relocated, but improvements to the space are necessary to complete the remaining relocations. Work is to include customer window systems, countertops, ballistic protection, door relocations, data management, and electrical improvements, along with security control of the elevator system. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Nobody online? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Moved and seconded. All those in favor closing the public hearing? Okay, that's unanimous. Counsel discussion. Madam Clerk?
One quick question.
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry.
Counsel Crowe.
You said something about ballistic protection. Is this all town buildings like that? Have the same protection?
We have a security plan we've been working on for the past several years, so as we improve facilities, we do upgrade to ballistic protection with our customer service doors, like right below us for the assessing office, that has that type of protection.
Yeah, I can understand that.
As far as the ballistic protection, is that something that we need to do in order for insurance reasons, or do we just feel like societally we need to go that way? I guess I don't sense that that's something that's that evident in a town, but I just could be naive.
Since 2015 or '16, we've been working with the town manager's office and the police department on, as we renovate buildings, and be in consideration of security, and there have been several suggestions about a FOB system for access to different floors in this building, the other building, lockable doors, knock boxes on the outside for emergency response personnel have access. And I think it's just prudent, and it was felt that it's prudent that we really consider safety, because while it's a rare incident that things happen, it does happen, and I think it made sense that we be prepared for these things and take certain measures to protect public servants and those that use these facilities.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Ludke. Do you have an estimate of when 200 Main will be empty?
Well, we would, we need to do some of this work, so probably another year from now, maybe in the fall of that year.
Certainly after elections. Just saying. Okay, so any other discussion? Madam Clerk, the vote, please.
Counselors. Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Okay. Item number 2024-133, Counsel Mendez.
Thank you, Madam President. This is old business, item number 2024-134.
133, please.
Oh, 133, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Appropriation order in the amount of $370,000 for funding the Barnstable Police Facility Improvement Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029, capital improvement plan. This is a public hearing, roll call majority, full vote of the council.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Hearing is open. Rationale, please.
Erected in 1981, the police department facility operates seven days a week and 24 hours per day. The facility is the center of law enforcement activity within the town of Barnstable, and its continuous operation takes a toll on building elements. Aged building systems need replacement to keep this building operational for the foreseeable future. The 1981 aluminum windows have exceeded their lifespan and urgently require replacement. After more than four decades, these windows have developed compromised seals, resulting in reduced insulation efficiency. These window units act as a barrier between inhabitants and the vermiculite wall insulation. The installation of new windows not only mitigates heat loss issues, but also addresses vermiculite infiltration. Mechanical units in the cell block have reached the end of their useful life and are in need of replacement. A portion of the garage doors are in dire need of replacement, along with the garage ventilation system. These upgrades are integral to maintaining the function of the facility. The existing chimney is cracked and beginning to fail. It is not used for mechanical systems and needs to be removed, and the roof patched. This project will complete the design and permitting to replace failing window systems, update the cell block, gym, garage, and training room mechanical systems, replace duckled split mechanical units, upgrade the lower level men's locker room shower spaces, and replace selected overhead doors. The failing chimney will be removed and selective interior finishes replaced. The police department's facility history spans more than four decades, and it's evident that substantial enhancements are essential. To address this, a well-structured project has been devised, segmented into four prioritized phases, as recommended by the police chief.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Nobody present, nobody online. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. Counsel discussion. Counsel Mendez.
Just a kind of request. Has the appropriation, have you selected the windows yet? No, I gotta, it's, believe me, have you, have you, have the company been select the windows yet? When you get those, when you select it, can you please forward me all the information?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Could do a peer review.
Exactly.
Okay. Counsel Ludke.
I just had a question on the locker rooms. 1981, it's been a while. There's probably more women on the force. Is there any kind of looking into, are the spaces adequate for the amount of women that are now on the force there? Or does that need to be adjusted?
Yeah, we currently have two projects going on, ongoing at the PD in design. One is for the mechanical improvements to the detective's wing. The other is ballistic protection and expansion of the lobby space. As part of that, we've been talking with the PD and working with them to do a master plan for the facility. We recently had to restore some of the showers downstairs, and in doing that, we had to shut down the showers and the only bathroom in the facility for the officers. And so we're looking at redundancy and what needs to happen to the facility in order to make it better. It's, you know, 1970 design for 2024 police operations, so we're looking at that.
Counsel Tamish.
When the addition was, if I may, when the addition was put on the police department, a new female locker room was added, as was a new male locker room, because the previous female locker room was pretty much a large closet. So that, I don't know what their space needs are now, but that was 1980, excuse me, 90...
91, I believe it was.
Would have been later than that, but anyway. There was a new locker room put on.
Counsel Mendez.
Do you plan on pulling out these old fiberglass showers and replacing with tile? What's the plan as far as that goes?
The existing showers that were there were replaced with fiberglass showers. Structures and Grounds did that as an in-house project and worked with the police department to do that. We're looking at the overall now layout of the entire bathroom as part of the CIP, so they did a quick fix, but we would have to go through a design process to evaluate whether tile showers are appropriate or what works there. I mean, it's an old locker room. It feels like an old locker room. It needs a whole facelift.
Well, the only reason why I mention that is that, you know, Pennywise, Palmfoolish, you're better off tile and getting rid of these old fiberglass things, because they just, they, in the long run, they don't last. That's the only reason why I say it. I work with this stuff all the time, so that's the only reason why I say it.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? No? Madam Clerk will take the vote.
Counselors. Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
12 yes.
Thank you. Item number 2024-134, Counsel Starr. Oh, you want to switch? Okay, Counsel Clark.
Yes, this is old business, requiring a public hearing with a roll call majority vote of the full council. Item number 2024-134, appropriation order in the amount of $359,623 for the Marine and Environmental Affairs Exterior Restoration Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2029, capital improvement plan.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of opening the public hearing signify by saying aye. Thank you. Rationale, please.
Constructed in 1986, the Marine and Environmental Affairs Building on Finney's Lane has been heavily used and modified. Metal building systems deteriorate over time. Roof systems exposed to coastal salt air corrode and need to be recoded or replaced. Some of the metal siding needs replacement. Several windows are leaking and also need to be replaced. As part of the design work, the entire envelope will be evaluated and a full scope of work identified. Items identified in the evaluation will be targeted for repair or replacement. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Anybody online? No? Seeing none, I'll take a motion in a second to close the public hearing. I need a motion. Counsel Ludke and Counsel Clark. Okay. All those in favor of closing public hearing? Thank you. Counsel discussion. Counsel Tamish.
Just as a point of information on the previous item, someone who has a much better memory than I just texted me that that was 2004 when that addition was put on the police department, so...
Wow, that's almost modern history.
Yeah.
Thank you. No counsel discussion on this? We'll go for the vote. You convinced us.
Counselors. Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
12 yes.
Counsel Starr.
Thank you. I'd like to open a public hearing on item 2024-135, appropriation order in the amount of $48,000 for the Barnstable Adult Community Center Exterior Restoration Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2029, capital improvements plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Aye. Rationale, please.
This request is to fund the assessment and design of replacement of various exterior components of the Barnstable Adult Community Center, including trim, siding, exterior doors, the asphalt roof, rear second floor deck, gutters, penetrations, attic ventilation, and issues related to animal infiltration. It is expected that additional items needing repair will be discovered and included during the project. This project will protect against water infiltration and ensure the integrity of the Barnstable Adult Community Center. Deteriorated and damaged exterior elements, such as trim, cedar shingle siding, and roofing, pose water infiltration risks to the structure. Upgrading these exterior elements will enhance the building's energy efficiency. New roofing, insulation, and attic ventilation systems will result in reduced energy consumption and lower utility bills, contributing to the center's sustainability and environmental responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? And there's nobody online, nobody present, so I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Oh, there's a motion in a second? All those in favor? Thank you. Hearing is closed. Counsel discussion. Counsel Schnapp.
Thank you, Madam President. Dan, could you remind us when this facility was built? Was it early 2000s?
I don't know. Late 90s. Lynn knows?
Late 90s.
Yeah. So around 2000.
Okay, so we're looking at, by the time construction, 20, over 25 years since these elements have been...
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Ludke.
Yes, you had mentioned animal infiltration. Have animals been documented inside, or are you just being proactive to stop any future animals?
Oh, they've had animals in the ceiling grid and evidence of them as well. One of the issues is the shingles come down to the ground, so there's rotting shingles at that point. And then one of the pictures of the front there, there's an opening at the top of the roof that Structures and Grounds has been chasing. I think they put some screening up there at one point in time.
Do you know what animals they were? Squirrels.
I think they were squirrels. I think the raccoon issue was over at SAB. Flying squirrels.
All righty. Any other counsel discussion? Madam Clerk, vote, please.
Counselors. Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
12 yes.
Item 2024-136, Counsel Leveque, please.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an item of old business. I move to open a public hearing, roll call majority vote for item number 2024-136, appropriation order in the amount of $300,000 for the Hyannis Youth and Community Center Mechanical Improvements Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029, capital improvement plan as written.
We have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Thank you. Rationale, please.
This overall project has been divided into multiple years of work, each addressing specific elements of repair as identified by consultants. In total, this multi-year project replaces and upgrades worn mechanical systems that were discovered during an evaluation conducted in 2020. This request will fund the design of replacement of makeup air unit 1, which provides makeup air to parts of the building, along with dehumidification system, unit 1, and associated ductwork modifications. Currently, these units are not providing adequate services to the interior spaces. An interlock with the kitchen vent system will be installed to meet current building code requirements. Any remaining project funds will be used to implement improvements scheduled for the following years as deemed appropriate. Fiscal year '26 funding requests will address the construction project for the replacement of these units. Fiscal year '27 through '29 requests will upgrade the Allerton Mechanical Control System, add air conditioning to Rank 2, and address interior finish and life safety element replacements as outlined in the facility management plan completed by our consulting engineer in 2018. The Department of Public Works assumed maintenance responsibilities for the Hyannis Youth and Community Center in October 2016. DPW commissioned a facility condition assessment to develop a comprehensive action plan. This capital improvement program is based on that engineering evaluation. Engineering funds appropriated in fiscal year '19 have been used to engineer replacement of deteriorated building and mechanical systems. Funding in fiscal year '20 replaced portions of the flat roof and provided for mechanical designs. Funding in fiscal year '21 replaced shingled roof systems and designs for improved police presence. Fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23 funding replaced critical mechanical units, and fiscal year '24 funds are being used to replace unit energy recovery ventilator number 2. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody present who would like to speak to this item? Or online? No? Seeing none? I would entertain a motion in a second to close the public hearing. We have a motion in a second? All those in favor? Thank you. Counsel discussion. Counsel Crowe.
How long have these systems been in this building? I'm probably going to age myself, but it seems like this was just built like five years ago, but I'm sure it's longer than that, but...
It was built in 2010?
Okay. And none of this equipment is under some kind of warranty or...
No. The building gets extreme wear and tear, but I think primarily, we have a difficult environment for mechanical systems, just the coastal salt in the air, and the way we spec this equipment now is we make sure it's adequately coated, and so we get the highest type of weather resistance possible, the way we specify these items now, so we anticipate that these items are going to last much longer than the original items, which didn't have those particular coatings specified on them.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Any other discussion? Counsel Ludke.
Yeah, this is very reminiscent of the air traffic control tower we discussed at the last meeting, where they talked about the corrosion. So that's the same issue that somehow the specifications then were not available or just not used or unknown?
I really can't answer that, not having been here, but we know that they did not include those things.
Now, are these also, I mean, owing to the skating rinks and the other thing, the gymnasia, is this always going to be perpetually more, maybe, I don't know, problematic or more expensive or intensive because of the use of this building? Is this something that you need to really keep on top of to keep it from degrading?
Yes, and that's why Public Works took it over, and we went through this comprehensive evaluation, and so now we have had this program to replace these things, but we've also implemented a very robust maintenance system where we use contractors that come in, and we require them to maintain the systems in accordance with the manufacturer's specifications so that they, we get the longest life possible out of them.
So this is contracted maintenance for this?
It's a mix.
Not in-house?
It's a mix of in-house and contracted.
Oh, there is some in-house as well? Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? Okay, seeing none. We're ready for a vote.
Counselors. Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Item number 2024-137. Counsel Leveque.
Thank you, Madam President. This is old business. I move to open a public hearing. We'll call majority vote of the full council. Item number 2024-137. Appropriation order in the amount of $285,059 for the Hyannis Youth and Community Center Security System Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029, capital improvement plan as written.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Thank you. Hearing is open. Rationale, please.
Completed in 2009. The building's security system is 15 years old. Upgrades to the system are now needed. This project will provide both physical and digital upgrades to the existing Paradox Access Control System. Over the past few years, the use of space within the building has changed, and concerns about employee safety have been raised. This project upgrades hardware and communication software of the access control system and allows remote monitoring and modification to access permissions. Part of the upgrade will install panic alarms at various locations as identified by HYCC staff. The updated system will allow the management of the building access system to the system by the Structures and Grounds Division as well. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Nobody online. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. Counsel discussion. Seeing none. We'll call for a vote.
Counselors. Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Thank you. Item number 2024-138. Counsel Clark.
Thank you very much, President Penn. This is old business, opening a public hearing and requiring a roll call, two-thirds vote of the full council. Item number 2024-138. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of $2,950,000 for the Hyannis Golf Course Clubhouse Restoration Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second?
Second.
To open the public hearing? All those in favor opening public hearing? Okay. Rationale, please.
The Hyannis Golf Course Clubhouse Restoration Project is to restore and upgrade the clubhouse, originally built in 1975, which sustained extensive damage due to flooding from a ruptured water pipe in the winter of 2023. The restoration of the clubhouse is paramount for the continued successful operation of the golf course. This facility houses critical components that are integral to the golf course's daily functions and the overall experience of golfers and visitors. The clubhouse serves as the central administrative hub for both the Hyannis Golf Course and the Barstow Fairgrounds Golf Course. It houses golf administration offices, a pro shop, conference center, and a commercial kitchen. The extensive damage to the building has rendered it unusable. These components are essential for the efficient management and coordination of golf operations and need to be restored. Due to the extent of damage, the existing building needs to be brought up to code as part of the reconstruction, which includes asbestos sheet rock embankment of water damaged areas, updated bathroom layout to meet ADA requirements, installation of a handicap lift to meet accessibility requirements, installation of a fire suppression system and water service to meet current codes, configuration of the basement space to meet exit code requirements, expansion of the pro shop and office space improvements, and updated fire alarm system and interior finish upgrades. The town has been working with the insurance company for a settlement which should cover most of the construction costs. However, now it is the time to make operational improvements to the building as part of the reconstruction. These include a revised bathroom layout, expanded pro shop, and office improvements. These additional costs will need to be paid for with golf funds and are estimated at approximately $500,000. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here? I figured the room would be full, everybody would be cheering for this to be done for Hyannis Golf Club, but anybody here to speak to this? No, nobody online. All right. So I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Moved in seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. Counsel discussion. Counsel Lucky.
Yes, this is an enterprise account. Can we get a figure of what's available for this? You said $500,000. Is that available in the enterprise account to fund this?
I'll turn to Mr. Mill. I felt his presence. You don't want to try this one, do you? So, yeah, the enterprise fund account has a certified balance of just under $2 million currently. We drafted this appropriation and loan order this way to give us the flexibility to borrow the monies needed to do the project in anticipation of the insurance reimbursements. So we don't expect to borrow $2.5 million. We'll end up borrowing half a million at the most, and we may end up just taking it out of the reserve. But this provides us maximum flexibility for financing the improvements that are needed out there.
Okay. Any other comment? Counsel Tamish.
So, Mark, it's been a year, right? And the insurance company has not come through yet?
Have you ever worked with an insurance company?
I was going to say, shocking.
Not on that kind of money.
Not on that kind of, exactly. It's a very large project, as Public Works has explained. It's complicated when you get water damage in a facility as much extensive as this was. But we're working with them. Our property management team is working with the insurance company.
Any other comments, questions? No? Yeah. Counsel Mendez.
As President Penn said, maybe the public's not here cheering, but I certainly am. It's something that's sorely needed, and, you know, golf is a huge attraction on the Cape, and we have to always upgrade our facilities to at least get people to come in and use them, so, great job.
Yeah, I will say, a lot of people, I know my neighbor plays over here, and he thinks the courses improved greatly recently, so anybody who needs to know that, we should pass it on to them because, you know, nobody really cares about the clubhouse. That's not true, they do, but, I mean, the course is more important than the clubhouse, but it's nice. Until it's over, and then, yeah. Counsel Leveque.
Thank you, President Penn. As the father of the reigning Hyannis Club champion, I just want to say that I'm in favor, sorry, I had to plug that in there. The, I just want to say, I appreciate all the hard work. I also want to commend the golf committee that's put in a lot of work as well to get input and encourage the movement and have, you know, patience, Director Ganella, for pushing forward, yes, working with the insurance company and adjust. This is a big claim, really big claim, and to really, and there was design flaws in that building. I think this is like the third time in five years or something like that where a pipe had frozen above that, and again, that's no fault of our DPW, but it's just, again, if there's some lemonade to be made out of these lemons, I think our staff is capitalizing on this opportunity, so thank you very much, and I'm in favor of this item.
Okay. We'll take a vote.
Counselors. Tamish. Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
That's twelve yes.
Thank you. Item number 2024-139. Counsel Crowe, would you like to read this?
This is an item of old business, open to a public hearing. We'll call majority vote by the full council. It's item number 2024-139. Appropriation order in the amount of $305,000 for the Joshua Pond Handicap Accessibility and Beach Improvement as outlined in the fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan as written.
Second. So we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Thank you. Public hearing is open. Rationale, please.
The Joshua Pond Park Handicap Accessibility and Beach Enhancement Project aims to improve access to the beach area at Joshua's Pond while addressing erosion issues and ensuring that the park is accessible to individuals with disabilities. The project will fund design and permitting to construct a handicapped accessible walkway and ramp from the parking lot to the beach, stabilize the embankment between the parking lot and the beach, and enhance the beach by increasing its area and elevation with respect to fluctuating water levels. The Joshua's Pond Handicap Accessibility and Beach Enhancement Project addresses critical needs and offers numerous benefits to both the community and the environment. It will ensure equal access for all members of the community, including individuals with disabilities. The lack of handicapped accessibility at the park currently excludes a portion of the population from enjoying its natural beauty and recreational opportunities. By constructing an ADA compliant ramp and installing walkways, the project will promote social equity, allowing everyone to experience the park's offerings. Additionally, the project will address the erosion of the embankment between the parking lot and the beach, which is a pressing issue that requires immediate attention. Stabilizing the embankment will prevent further damage, acting as a safeguard for the park's infrastructure and protecting the local ecosystem. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Nobody online, nobody in the House, so I would entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearing. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor closing public hearing? Thank you. Counsel discussion. Questions? Counsel Turkelson.
I know that there's money here for design and permitting, but there's the little sketch at the top of the ramp. How many feet is that ramp based on that, the slope?
I don't know the answer to that question offhand, and that is just one scenario. That's not necessarily the proposal. That's just, that's a schematic that's been put together in the past. This funding is to look at a more concrete solution, to try to nail down the best way to navigate that. It's a pretty steep, pretty steep grade, so it's going to be a challenge to navigate that in an accessible manner, and the steep grades actually leading to the erosion issues and what currently is the impending failure of the revetment there as well. So, something we definitely need to address. That was just one concept that was thrown out as a way to do it. We're going to evaluate all options and try to figure out what the best way to do it is.
Yeah, I was trying to imagine this being handicapped accessible with that, the amount of pitch that that is.
That's right. It may require navigating into the trees that are, if you're looking down at the pond, on the right side, maybe even having a meandering path through there in order to overcome the grade, so some work to be done there, but that's what this project's for.
Counsel Crowe, and then Counsel Mendez.
You also said, due to the rise of the water in this thing, I can see that the beach has been totally eroded. What, do you just bring more sand in? How do you handle that?
To be determined. There's some challenges associated with trying to fill the beach there, most notably permitting challenges, but a goal would be to try to maintain as much beach as possible as part of the project, so that's something we'll evaluate through the design process, but certainly go down there certain times a year, specifically when there's high groundwater and there's very little beach, and so one of the intents would be to try to maximize as much beach as possible year-round.
Is that, is the rise in the height of the water level, is that just natural from more rain? We've had more rain versus drier years?
Yeah, it's natural fluctuation of groundwater.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel Mendez.
Thank you, President Penn. Yeah, Joshua's is one of the three circuits of beaches us millbillies would swim in when we were kids, and it has eroded quite a bit. So my question is, are you trying to stop the erosion, or are you trying to slow the erosion?
I'd say both. I mean, ideally, in a perfect world, we would be able to stop the erosion, right? I think there's opportunities with smart design to minimize erosion that occurs there to the maximum extent possible. Certainly, there's natural topographic challenges here that's going to result in some form of erosion with heavy storm events, but with smart design, we hope to minimize that to the extent possible.
Is there a metric that you can use to calculate erosion per year?
Yeah, so a lot of the erosion we're seeing is actually, it appears to be coming from the actual slope leading down to the beach, so it's a little difficult to quantify and a little difficult to determine what the source is, so I'm not sure I have an easy metric to utilize, but certainly the intent of the project would be to minimize the amount of erosion we're seeing out there, fix a revetment that is in a, it's in poor shape right now, and is potentially going to be compromised over time, so that needs to be addressed, and try to minimize the amount of sediment that's getting into the pond from the slope down to the pond.
Yeah, because the only reason why I ask is, I mean, obviously, I'm going to vote for it, but the only reason why I ask is I just want to know if we're kind of throwing good money after bad, if it's something that we just, you know, if it's going to, if we're going to have the same problem in two years. You know, so, I mean, obviously, that's drastic, but that's why I'm asking, is there a metric or is there some kind of thing we can use to kind of see the progression of the erosion itself?
Yeah, I mean, the progression of the erosion in the pond, you can actually see through historical aerials pretty significantly.
I see it when I go down there.
And you can see it when you go down there as well, right? So there's certainly, if not quantitative, there's anecdotal evidence that we'll be able to track to make sure that we've achieved success.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Starr, and Counsel Crowe.
Thank you. It seems to me that the rock revetment is stopping the natural erosion that would actually supply the beach with sand. So that's why, and then, so there's no sand replenishing the beach, and the sand is just getting spread out deeper into the pond, I think. And also, this pond doesn't have an outlet, does it? I mean, a stream outlet. It's groundwater. Okay? Okay, thank you.
Counsel Crowe.
Taking into account Counselor Starr's comments, I was thinking maybe on the grassy slope, there'd be some kind of retaining walls or something like that, but if, maybe you can tell me, if it's going to keep eroding and then, the sand doesn't replenish on the beach, so that might be not the right solution.
Yeah, and that's exactly what this design process is for. We haven't completed a design process here. There's a number of alternatives we need to look at. Terracing may be an option. Retaining walls may be or may not be the right option. It may be a meandering walkway that utilizes the areas between the walkways as stormwater mitigation, which will help slow down the erosion. So there's a few options that we've considered, and we've batted around some ideas. The intent's to get into the design process and really try to figure that out, though.
Counsel Tamish.
I just want to amplify what Counselor Mendez said. You know, I'm going to support it, but I'm concerned that because of the rising groundwater, I mean, there is no beach there, and you said there may be permitting issues to add sand there, so, I mean, I think that's going to be a huge issue, and it'd be interesting to see what you come up with for that, because there is no beach. It's, water's right there. I mean, I remember going there with my family years ago, and you probably had 15 or 20 feet of beach. The water's completely covered it now, for whatever reason.
That's absolutely the case, and it's one of the challenges of the project, but there's been a clear, there's been a clear desire for us to take a look at this and try to find a solution to make this as usable as possible.
Well, maybe once you have a plan, you could bring it back to the council and let them know what you came up with. They seem interested in knowing.
We look forward to it.
Excellent. Right, seeing no more discussion. Madam Clerk, we're ready to vote.
Counselors. Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Okay, item 2024-140. Is that Counselor Tamish, please? Page 30.
Okay, old business, a public, old business, a public hearing, roll call, majority vote on item number 2024-140, an appropriation order in the amount of $243,000 for the Centerville Recreation Mechanical Improvement Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan as written.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor of opening public hearing? Okay, rationale, please.
The Centerville Community Building Mechanical Improvement Project concludes a series of critical upgrades and improvements to revitalize this historic former school building built in 1880. The first phase of the project to be funded by this appropriation will design the conversion of the heating system from steam to a hot air system. The boilers will be replaced along with thermostats and all piping. Work will include the replacement of the failed makeup air system located in the building's attic. Air conditioning will be added to the system. Additional issues such as hazardous materials abatement will be addressed as discovered during the project. These improvements will dramatically improve the comfort, functionality, and efficiency of the facility, making it more inviting for our residents and visitors. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing? Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Seeing none, nobody online. I will entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor? That would be unanimous, aye? Counsel, discussion. Okay, Madam Clerk, we'll go right on to vote.
Counselors, Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
That is 12 yes.
Just want to say, on behalf of Public Works, thank you very much for your support during this capital improvement project process, something that takes a good part of our year. We work very hard at developing the program, and it's great to have it supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to the results. Good for you. All right, I'm, we'll wait for them to reorganize. Counsel Bloom, would you read 2024-141?
Certainly, thank you, Madam President. Item 2024-141 is old business, open to a public hearing, and we'll have a roll call majority vote of the full council. It's an appropriation order in the amount of $175,000 for the network infrastructure upgrade project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Rationale, please. Mr. Benoit, welcome.
Thank you. Jim Benoit, Director of Information Technology. The town's IT infrastructure includes roughly 45 network switches which are installed within town buildings all over town, as well as the fiber optic wires and copper wiring that connect everything together. This network forms the backbone of all the data flowing to and from PCs, servers, printers, and other devices located across all town facilities. Most of these network switches have now reached the end of their life, and they're due for replacement. Several of these devices have failed in recent years, and getting replacement parts has become increasingly difficult. If a critical piece of equipment were to fail, extended outage could occur if replacement parts were not available. Funding this project would replace the outdated networking equipment with modern devices, which would have improved security features, better performance, lower power consumption, and they'd be fully supported by the manufacturer. This project is planned to be done in phases over a five-year period, beginning this year with a request for $175,000. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Nobody present, nobody online. I will entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. Counsel, discussion, please. Counsel Clark.
I fully support this. It looks like a critical piece of our NERF Center for our town, and thank you for your work in being proactive to get this to head off any disastrous glitches. Thanks.
Anybody else? Counsel Turkelson.
That looks like spaghetti junction to me. And as a person who cobbles together her own network at her place of business, I can understand how frustrating this is, and I hope that if you pull all these cables out, you might find some young art student somewhere who could make a project with it, because I can't imagine how many cables you're going to be throwing away or recycling or whatever you can do with that. So, thank you.
Counsel Lucky.
No, I was just going to make a similar comment. I absolutely love the picture you used for the justification.
Seeing no more discussion, we'll go for a vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselors, Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you.
Next item, number 2024-142. Counsel Turkelson.
This is an item of old business referred for a public hearing, requiring a roll call, two-thirds vote of the full council. Item number 2024-142, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $900,000 for the Barnstable Community Innovation School Elevator Installation Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024 to fiscal year 2028 capital improvement plan as written.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Welcome to the school department. Rationale, if you want to introduce yourself and then proceed.
That would be great. Thank you so much. Hi, my name is Sarah O'Hern. I'm the proud superintendent of the Barnstable Public Schools, and it's nice to see you all. This is Kevin Maxon. Kevin has been serving as the interim director of facilities since April 1st. Previous to that, he was our assistant director. We had Mike Lambros depart around April 1st, and I'm really thrilled to have the succession with Kevin being able to come on board. We have 15 projects being presented this evening, all of which are situated within a broader constellation of facilities' needs. You'll see a reference in the book related to a facilities' conditions assessment, which was completed last June, that identified approximately $138 million worth of capital projects based on our 10 school buildings and required maintenance. The projects that you are seeing this evening are the highest, most priority, and that was identified both by the architects and then further vetted with our facilities department.
We're just going, yeah, we're going to wait for Lynn to get the presentation, your presentation up, and then we'll go, okay? Unless you want to just talk and she'll catch up to you, which would you like to do?
Sure. I can.
Why don't we do that? In, out of respect for time.
Sure.
Okay.
This project aims to install two elevators at Barnstable Community Innovation School. The existing two lifts are very old, they're at the end of useful life. The manufacturer no longer supports them, so the need is great there. We are looking to increase accessibility for staff and students who can't, you know, obviously, go up to the second floor without those lifts, and that's why it is necessary to install elevators.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the room that, who wishes to speak to this item? I'll wait for you to get the slides up here in case that spurs any other communications not working.
I'm on first.
Is it on? Maybe the battery's dead. We'll try another one.
I'm sorry, I'm new here.
It's all right. We'll get it together eventually.
Yeah. No. There you go.
There we go.
Something happened. Yeah, so these are the, these are the existing Gervonta stairlifts. They are no longer supported by the manufacturer, so finding parts for these is very, very difficult, and they are no longer, you know, increasingly less reliable. So it just enhances the need for new elevators there.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anybody here to speak to this? No. Seeing none, nobody online. I'll entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Counsel, discussion. This is the school on Bursas Way, for those of us who don't have kids in the school, correct?
This is correct.
Okay. I went to school there, yeah. Counsel Clark.
Thank you very much.
It was new then.
President Penn. This is just a typo, I believe, that it refers to fiscal year 2024 to 2028. The others are 2029.
Oh, on our, as it's written here in the book, yep, in the agenda.
It says 2024 to 2029. I just thought it was, oh, that's on this one.
Should it say it's 2025 through 2029?
Yeah.
That's what all the other ones have said. And it was read in that way?
Well, I didn't read any, but I would.
No, that's okay. You read what was there. So let's, how do we correct that? We'll just state that it was a typo and that it's been corrected to the year 2025 through fiscal year 2029.
I would have a scribbler's error.
Scribbler's error, there we go. Works for me. Okay, other discussion? Lots of hands here. Counsel Schnapp.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for coming tonight. Can I, you're taking two lifts and replacing them with two elevators? Is that, are my, are you just replacing these lifts with more upgraded lifts?
No, you had to correct the first time. Two elevators, correct. So if you go to, if you want to try to replace these with new lifts, the new code requirements for the size of the platform do not comply with the size of the stairway.
So do you have to find space to put an elevator in, or I, how are?
Yep, that is correct.
Okay.
We have two potential locations picked out currently.
Okay.
So that would be figured out in the design, the design phase.
I think someone at the town should talk to you about maybe the cost savings that you, yours is a much cheaper solution than the town elevator, but maybe that's a much more complicated project here, but, so.
Okay.
So you're praising him for the money involved versus the town here? Yeah. I think it only has to do one floor versus three. And it's not dealing with a building from the 1800s. That might be good, even though it's old. I get that, yeah.
Yeah, that is correct. I think 1949, I believe.
Yeah. It wasn't open until, I think it was, I don't know, 50-something.
Okay.
Early 50s. Counsel Turkelson.
And we're having two lifts because we need redundancy in case one is broken? Where the volume of people being transported requires two lifts?
That's actually a great question. So one lift goes from the first floor to the second floor classrooms. The second lift goes from the cafeteria, which is separate, so these are separated, okay, up to the gymnasium. Those two floors do not connect, so you need, to make the school accessible everywhere, you actually need two separate lifts, two separate elevators as well.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Yeah, cafeteria's like a half a floor down.
Correct.
Yeah. Counsel Lucky.
Yeah, that was my question, because there's like three floors. There's the cafeteria, there's the classroom, and then there's the gym. So that elevator will have three stops?
Kind of. It's like a half, it's almost like a half floor, right?
But it will.
It will have three stops, correct.
Okay.
Counsel Bloom, do you have any comments on this, seeing you worked in the building at one time?
Yeah, these lifts that they built were really clumsy, and you certainly don't want somebody on a wheelchair on the lift when the fire alarm goes off. I'm surprised they lasted this long. Where are you putting the first elevator that you had mentioned?
So the proposed, the gymnasium cafeteria one would be, I don't know what it was used for and, you know, when you were there, but it's almost like a spare teacher room. It's, it's, if you're looking at the gymnasium, it's to the left. Right, right there is one possible location. Another possible location for the other, for the teaching wing, so to speak, is a bathroom near the principal's office, right in that area.
Oh, yeah.
It's another potential location.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good.
Any other comments, discussion? All righty. Madam Clerk, we'll go for the vote.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
It's 12 yes.
Counsel Schnapp, do you want to read 2024-143?
I sure will.
Is your mic on?
This is an item of old business requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority vote of the full council. Item number 2024-143, appropriation order in the amount of $550,000 for the playground safety project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025-2029 capital improvement plan.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Aye, okay, thank you. Rationale, please.
Yep, the rationale for this project is to increase the safety of the playgrounds by adding a rubber mat to keep all the mulch in place. It will also increase accessibility to all people with any type of motor disabilities. Currently, that is not the case. Will also reduce maintenance and in the long run, it'll increase safety. Let me see here. This is what we're looking at right here. Obviously, you can see if you have any mobility needs, that matting is definitely going to help you out. You're going to be able to utilize the entire playground. The one on the right is actually in Forestale. This was just recently installed. I actually, my daughter, she goes to Bourndale School in Bourne, they have this as well. The other aim of this project and kind of what really brought this up was increasingly, we're having very large storms, lots of rain. So twice, twice just last year in these significant rainstorms, we lost a lot of our mulch, a lot of our safety mulch, which prevents people from, gets from impact injuries. Essentially, three playgrounds just ended up in the field right next to it. So you had mulch in the field, no mulch where you needed it the most, and then we have, we had our grounds guys just working as quickly as possible to get everything safe again. So given the fact that these 100-year storms are every year now, I think it's really important to have this.
Thank you, and this is for all the schools.
Correct.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Nobody online. I'll entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearing. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. Counsel, discussion. Seems like a no-brainer.
Yeah, just a quick comment.
Yeah. Counsel Mendez.
I'm just chuckling to myself because, I mean, Felicia, remember hanging a seat, the monkey bars?
Yeah.
We played on top of concrete. I don't know how we survived. I mean, seriously.
We played dodgeball.
Yeah, dodgeball, the.
Hopscotch, whatever.
Those hot slides.
Yep, slides, there were 1,000 degrees. Yeah, I know. I've got one question real quick. Real quick question. Sure. The mats are black. Are there other colors? Because it seems to be in the summertime, they'd be very, very hot. I actually, I'm not sure of that. I can, I can look into that and get an answer for you. I've not seen any other colors out there and other playgrounds. You'll also notice that these are used commonly in the Gaga pits as well, but I think I've only seen black, but I will look into that.
Probably recycled rubber.[1781.71] Probably recycled rubber.
I'm, I'm not exactly sure, um, but I could look into it.
Okay. Any other comments? Alright. Um, Madam Clark, we'll go for the vote.
Counselors. Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Hen.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
12 yes.
Great. Item 2024-144, Counsel Ludkey, please.
Okay, this is old business, it's a public hearing, a roll call majority vote of the full council. Item 2024-144. Appropriation ordering the amount of $85,000 for the paging system upgrade at Hyannis West Elementary School, an Enoch Cobb Early Learning Center project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to open the public hearing, all those in favor? Thank you. Public hearing is open. Rationale, please.
Uh, yep, the objective of this project is to upgrade the PA system at Hyannis West Elementary School, as well as install a new one at the Early Learning Center. The existing one is old, uh, it's, it's no longer covered by the manufacturer, serviced by the manufacturer. A modern paging, paging system would allow Hyannis West Elementary and Enoch Cobb Learning Center to communicate effectively with staff, students, and visitors. The current paging system does not work in one part of the, of Enoch Cobb. A functioning paging system is essential for any emergency and, and safety.
Thank you. Seeing this is a public hearing, is there anybody here to speak to this? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion in a second to close the public hearing. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Thank you. Uh, counsel discussion and questions. No-brainer, it's an important school that everybody be able to hear what the heck is going on in all parts of the building. Alrighty. Ready for a vote, I believe. Madam Clark.
Counselors. Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Hen.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yeah.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
It's 12 yes.
Thank you. Counsel Burdick, would you like to read 2024-145?
Thank you. I move to open a public hearing for item 2024-145, an appropriation order in the amount of $344,000 for the Barnstable Intermediate School exterior door replacement project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan.
Is there a second? So we have a motion in a second to open public hearing, all those in favor? Thank you, hearing is open. Rationale, please.
Uh, yeah, we are looking to replace the exterior doors at Barnstable Intermediate School. Uh, it's also kind of as a, a larger program to kind of systematically replace all our exterior doors throughout the district. We're looking to replace all our concealed vertical rod, um, exterior doors with new mullion doors, because they're safer, more secure, um, they require less maintenance. And particularly in Barnstable Intermediate School, if you want to work on one of these doors, a lot of the times you have to, because it's a concealed vertical rod, you have to actually kind of take it apart from above. There's a large soffit over this building. So if you want to work on that door, you actually have to ta, take it off the hinges completely, it's very heavy, put on sawhorses, put it back together, and then put it back on the door. Also, they're, they're old as well, so. There's a lot of reasons, uh, good reasons to replace them.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anybody here to speak to this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion in a second to close the public hearing. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Thank you, public hearing is closed, counsel discussion. Counsel Lucky.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of complexity to this, and I don't want to make it over to complicated, but you hear of school shootings where doors were left open, little rocks left in and things like that. I hope there's a lot of security concerns as you're replacing these doors, and also we just talked about the elevator. Are you going to have the handicapped openings? I don't, I don't know if any of the schools have that for someone who would have to open a door, you know, who was in a wheelchair, if they were un, you know, unassisted, if they were by themselves. I just wondered, uh, there seem to be a lot of considerations with exterior doors. I just wonder what depth you're going to go to in this analysis.
One of our primary, uh, current, you know, our, our current priorities is to, at every school, create secure vestibules while we're doing our exterior door replacements, so if you walk into a front office, you're going to get in, you know, if they allow you in, buzz you in, you're only going to get in one, one step, right? And then you have another set of locked doors in front of you, and that's an added security measure. So you're going to have to go through essentially two checkpoints. So safety is, you know, uh, obviously first, first on our minds with all this.
And to the handicapped access, any considerations of that?
So at, at certain locations, uh, I believe in the, in the front of schools, there is that. On these, a lot of the side doors, I don't believe there are any, as far as electronic ones. That is something we, we would look at.
Counsel Mendez.
Again, I do this for a living, so. The, um, you're right about the concealed vertical rod system. It's antiquated, but it doesn't take the labor you say, you can work on it. When the door's in the opening, I do them all the time. The mullion system, are those doors aluminum or steel?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure what they would be specked out at for, for the project yet.
Another thing you need to be cognizant of is the panics. You don't want the hex head keys in the panics, because kids will be able to hold open the panics with the hex head. Very simple to do. So what you, you don't want steel doors either, because they're going to end up rotten out within 20 years.
Yep.
So that's something you should really think about doing. So I'd like to see the specs on these doors when you get them.
Yeah, with, with these, you know, with the, with the newer schools, uh, we're looking to put in hardware that will last. You know what I mean, for sure.
Yeah, well, the mullion is a better system than the, than the concealed vertical rod. The concealed vertical rod is antiquated, it's old-fashioned. But what you have to be cognizant of is the materials that the doors are made of.
Yep.
Because the steel doors, especially on the cape, are, they'll last 20 years tops. And then we'll be here replacing them again for 10 times the cost. So that's something you want to.
Absolutely, I absolutely agree with you.
Thank you.
Do you know how many doors you're going to replace at that school?
There are approximately 47 doors.
Wow.
Panels, panels.
Mm-hmm.
So, like, you know.
Openings of doors?
Um, there's 15 singles, 17 doubles.
Wow. No wonder. Okay. Everybody set? Ready for the vote? Madam Clark.
Counselors. Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Hen.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
It's 12 yes.
Counsel Burdick, give us 2024-146?
Of course. I make a motion to open a public hearing for item 2024-146. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of $3,353,700 for the unit ventilator replacement project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to open the public hearing, all those in favor, please? Aye. Thank you. Public hearing's open, rationale, please.
Yep, this project actually is, has kind of three functions. One is to replace the aging, uh, unit ventilators at BUE. They're original to the building. The second is to, because the chiller there is not that old, take that, bring it to the high school, because that one, the, the performing arts center chiller is, is old and needs replacing. And then the third one is to solve the problem of the chilled water going through, um, the, the, the pipes. Some of the valves sticking out of the original, well, the, the pipe insulation there are, have deteriorated because of the chilled water. Uh, it's also an opportunity to, uh, convert to, uh, convert to the VRF system, which would allow us to get rid of the chiller, electric essentially. As you can see on the left, the rusty valve. That's what we're dealing with. By switching to VRF, that would eliminate that issue going forward. Uh, the unit ventilators, again, are original, and, uh, the chiller at the high school is nearing the end of its useful life, so it's really, it's, it's like a hat trick facilities project. Solves a lot of problems.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anybody here to speak to this? Nada. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second to close the public hearing. I have a motion in a second, all those in favor to close the hearing? Thank you. Counsel discussion. I like the fact that you're reusing usable parts. Counsel Bloom.
How the heck did, uh, you get ho, hot water running through the, uh, pipes and, and the, uh, cooling season and cold water running in through the pipes in the wintertime? How did that happen?
So, so you have a two-pipe system there? So you, you do, you just switch over from chilled water, um, from, from the chiller, and then you isolate that, and you switch over to heating? So you, you just, you just kind of valve it off? Yep. So there's two pipe systems and four pipe systems. If you had a four-pipe system, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have that issue.
I see. So, so there was a valve problem?
Uh, well, there is now.
Yeah. Okay.
Looked like barbecue chicken, actually, to me. Bad valve. You haven't seen me grill. Just kidding. Any other comments? Nah? No discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote.
Counselors. Mendez.
Yes.
Hen.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yeah.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you. Counsel Ludkey, item number 2024-147.
Okay, this is old business, it's a public hearing, a roll call, two-thirds, uh, vote of the full council. Item 2024-147, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $650,000 for the auditorium RTU replacement project as aus, as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to open the public hearing, all those in favor? Thank you. Rationale, please.
Uh, yep, this, this project will aim to replace the existing rooftop unit at West Village's Elementary School. Uh, it's original to the building. It has a cracked heat exchanger, so we can't use it for actual heating during the winter months. So we need to replace it. The roof that it sits atop is also in, in, in bad shape and in need of replacement as well. So obviously, a working heating and cooling, uh, rooftop unit is essential to any school or building. So, uh, that's why we're requesting these funds. There's, there's a picture of it.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody here to speak to this? Nobody in person and nobody online, so I would entertain a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Thank you. Counsel discussion. Poor kid's been cold. Alright. We'll take a vote.
Counselors. Hen.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you. Item number 2024-148. Counsel Schnepp.
Thank you, President Penn, this is an item of old business requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority vote of the full council. Item number 2024-148. Appropriation order in the amount of $78,000 for the Hyannis West parking project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025-2029 capital improvement plan.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to open the public hearing, all those in favor? Thank you. Hearing is open. Rationale, please.
Yep, this project will, uh, aim to add 20 additional parking spaces to Hyannis West Elementary School parking lot. Currently, staff and visitors are parking at Star Market across the street, which obviously creates a safety hazard, because there's not enough parking. Additional parking at Hyannis West would improve safety, convenience, and equity for all the staffs and visitors. In addition, it would, uh, it would also reduce traffic congestion, which I'm sure if you guys are trying to get in and out of there, you'll notice it's very difficult. Uh, it'll improve the appearance of the school and make it easier for parents and caregivers to, uh, pick up and drop off their kids. These are the two potential locations where we're settled in on that circle currently, right in there on each side. That's where we'd add them, most likely. If you notice, the, uh, the arrow up on the left, that, those people are parking on dirt, right there? They're in the lawn. So that's why we, we're in, very much in need of these, uh, new parking spaces.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anybody here to speak to this? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion in a second to close the public hearing. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Thank you. Counsel discussion. Counsel Turkelson.
The 20 additional parking spaces, um, have, have we studied how many spaces we need? And that's how you came to the number of 20?
So we're actually in the middle of a paving project right now. So we, we have studied what we need for parking spaces, and the idea is if this gets approved, we'd be able to wrap this kind of into that CIP project as well, which is currently ongoing. So I kind of, we're, kind of already have a preliminary design for this. So there, there is a need, yes.
I know there's a need, I guess I'm just wondering if, if we're fulfilling the need with 20 spaces, or is this something that, you know, that you've actually studied it and the number was 20 versus 40 versus 10? Like, I, I'm just wondering how you came to the number 20? Because obviously, people are parking across the street and it's dangerous, so you're coming to us. So I'm just wondering how you got to this conclusion?
Sure, there, there, there was some sort of study done. How they came to 20 with this particular, um, capital request, I'm not exactly sure, but, uh, I did speak with the engineers and they said this is necessary, so.
I guess I'm just hoping it's enough so that we're not doing something once and then going back and saying, you know, we didn't do a good job thinking ahead, and now we need more space and we have to undo what we've done and, you know.
So to go, to go back to the, the capital project currently, it actually is adding more spaces as well. So I think there was a comprehensive study done prior to this.
I just have a quick question. What's that circle used for now with the grasses? Is that like a playground thing?
Uh, kids may play there occasionally. Uh, most of the playground is done on the blacktop behind the school. Over to the right, there's a field there, and then directly to the rear. That's where most, most of the kids go. It's occasionally used, I would say.
Okay. Counsel Mendez.
Doing it with this capital improvement project.
Doing it with this capital improvement project, so you're probably saving money in the long run if we were to do it now, rather than you know, it's all I need to hear.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll take a vote.
Counselors. Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levecq.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Counselor Turkelson, 2024-149.
This is an item of old business, open to a public hearing with a roll call majority vote of the full council. Item number 2024-149, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $757,700 for the Barnstable Intermediate School Network Based Public Address System Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan as written.
Rationale.
Yep, so this project proposes to replace the PA system at the high school. The current one is outdated. And again, the manufacturer will no longer support the system. What we aim to replace it with is a PA system that is IP-based, actually. You can, you can zone, you can have different, different announcements in different zones of the school. If Sarah wanted to give an announcement from your office, you could potentially do that. You can actually integrate the system on a broader scale as well in other schools as they're upgraded with this IP-based system. And it's digital, so the sound quality is better. And again, the current one is no longer supported by the manufacturer. So it is, it is necessary for safety and convenience as well.
Before we continue, I think we have a Scribner's error in the what was just read into the record, because that says Barnstable Intermediate School, whereas this is for the high school. So can we, can we update that? We get it? Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry to be so rude.
You're fine.
But I just want to make sure that's right. All right, so this is a public hearing. There's anybody here to speak to this item? Not online, not in public. I would entertain a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Thank you. Counsel discussion. Counsel Starr.
I had a quick question. So will this, if it, will you support this? Will people, staff in the high school now support this? Or will we need a contract to support it?
I imagine you would need a, a contract to support this IP-based system. It's, it's, it's kind of like a, you know, a cloud-based, so similar to that. Its functions would be.
Thank you.
It's probably coming with a service contract. Is that what you're asking, Gordon? Okay.
It says operating budget impact now and in the future. It says not. So there is an impact in it, isn't it?
Maybe it's included for X amount of years. I don't know.
That is possible.
They'll be back if not? Any other discussion? No? Okay. We'll take a vote, Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levecq.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Okay, Counsel Bloom, would you please read 2024-150?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Item 2024-150 is old business, open for a public hearing and the, the roll call majority vote of the full council. It's an appropriation order in the amount of $160,000 for the Hyannis West locker room renovation project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Thank you. Rationale, please.
These spaces right here are currently really not being utilized as locker rooms. As you may or may not know, High West is currently in dire need of space for teaching. By renovating these two spaces into teaching spaces, that would help alleviate some of the spatial concerns there and increase flexibility, flexibility for teaching programs by adding that space.
I guess so. All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second to close the public hearing? All those in favor? Thank you. Counsel discussion. Counsel Schnapp.
Thank you, Madam President. Do you anticipate adding windows to these spaces?
So you actually couldn't, those are on the interior of the building? So you actually, you would just be opening up windows into more of the building, I guess? There's no, there's no, yeah. There's a hallway to the right and there's a hallway to the left. And then on the backside, there's another locker room. So there's no, no, no opportunity for windows there. But lighting obviously could be utilized.
But the, these don't look very big. So would they be classrooms or just specialized teaching spaces?
I can jump in on that. I think not so much classrooms, but more specialized teaching spaces, places for small groups, counseling, things of that nature. We have an increased need for more of those small learning environments for a variety of reasons. So I wouldn't envision it being a classroom with, with no windows and then being kind of small. But we do have a great need for smaller group spaces.
Any other questions, comments? Counsel Ludkey.
You know, they do have those systems that go through the roof and bring light in. Has that been considered at all? You know what I'm talking about? They're quite, quite good.
I, I do, actually. I, so, you know, my, my history is, I started out as a carpenter contractor, so I've actually installed those previously.
Yeah, it'd be nice to look. I just think natural light, especially with young children, is, is pretty important, so.
I agree.
Anything you could do to explore that would be really nice.
Those little solar tubes. Yeah, they're round, yeah. All righty. No other discussion, we'll take a vote.
Counselors. Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levecq.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Item number 2024-151, Counselor Tamish, please. Page 41.
This is old business requiring a public hearing. Item number 2024-151, a roll call majority vote of the full council. An appropriation order in the amount of $200,000 for the plumbing fixture replacement project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan as written.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Thank you. Rationale, please.
Yep, the goal of this project is to proactively start replacing some of these old fixtures at Arcade through three schools, particularly the oldest ones, BCS, Barnes Community Innovation School, Hyannis West Elementary, and Barnstable is Barnstable, probably the oldest, oldest ones we have. Due to the age of the buildings, the plumbing needs are becoming more and more frequent. So the need to replace the fixtures as well is increasing. And then when you do go to replace some of these fixtures, the infrastructure itself oftentimes needs to be repaired as well, which results in having to shut off the water. A lot of these shut-offs do not work, so you have to shut it off at the main. So we would aim to do a lot of this work over the summer when kids would not be impacted. But it, it is an increasing need, for sure.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion in a second to close the public hearing. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Counsel discussion. It's pretty obvious. Everybody good? Ready to vote? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levecq.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Counsel Crowe, item number 2024-152.
This is an item of old business, open to a public hearing, a roll call, two-thirds majority vote. That's item number 2024-152, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $1,110,000 for the funding of the Barnstable High School bathroom renovation project as outlined in the fiscal year 2025 to FY 2029 capital improvement plan as written.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Thank you. Public hearing is open. Rationale, please.
Yep, the goal of this project is to remodel, start to remodel the bathrooms at Barnstable High School. This will entail tile partition and fixture replacement. The condition of the current bathrooms are at the end of the useful life. They've been used pretty, pretty hard, I would say. This improvement will reduce maintenance needs in the bathrooms over time. By having a newer, newest, better finishes, it'll increase the ability to keep it clean. And it'll increase the, increase the efficiency of the fixtures as well.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Nobody online? I would entertain a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye? Public hearing is closed. Counsel discussion. Counsel Starr.
Thank you. I've, I've been to some of the high school civics presentations and a lot of students have talked about the bathrooms and morale. I can see it would, it would, just anything you can do to help them with the bathrooms would be great. Thank you.
Counsel Mendez.
Those are the same exact bathrooms when I was in school. Same exact, and I graduated almost 40 years ago. Wow. Same windows, too.
Counsel Crowe.
How many bathrooms does this include renovating? So I, I would aim to start with. How many are there and how many are you going to do? Uh, uh, just ballpark. So I believe there's 19 set, I'm sorry, nine sets, 18 large bathrooms in the high school. I would aim for four with this, with this appropriation. And then have like an alternate bid. So every time we go to bid, especially in this, in this environment, I would say our bids are coming back really, really high. So with any type of project we do now, it's conservative base bid and then alternate one, alternate two, et cetera, et cetera. So that's kind of how we plan it going forward. And it'd be phased. Four, four bathrooms initially.
Four of 19, okay.
And, 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 yeah.
So this doesn't include staff and teacher bathrooms? Or they use the same bathrooms as the students do?
We would be starting with the student bathrooms. Yeah, because they're, they're in the worst shape.
Priority, yeah. Counsel Schnapp.
Thank you, President Penn. Do we have any gender-neutral bathrooms in the high school? Or would we consider them if we're doing these renovations? Yeah, no?
In most of our schools, or several of our schools, we do have bathrooms for all genders, gender-neutral bathrooms available to students.
Any other discussion? Counsel Ludkey.
Yeah, I just, well, maybe it's kind of a strange question, but, you know, I have a child in the high school and the things that happen in these bathrooms are not very pleasant.
We don't want to know.
Are you going to put any other, is there such a thing as a vape detector or smoke detectors that could be put into these bathrooms?
We do have vape detectors in the bathrooms at the high school. And the associate principals get alerts and, and do respond to them.
Are they working?
I know that, I haven't heard that they're not working. And I know in the kind of weekly newsletter that the principal puts out, she sometimes will put the data, recent data in there about how many incidents have been happening. I can check on it in terms of recent times, but I haven't heard anything to the contrary.
And I don't know how many bathrooms are in there. I don't know if you could have bathrooms for good actors and bathrooms for bad actors, right? I don't know, it just, it's, it's unpleasant if you have to walk into these places and, you know, if you say anything, you're going to be thrown into a toilet or something. I mean, I mean, I hate to say it this way, but it's kind of the reality, so. I mean, this is long overdue, but it'd be nice to have enhancements, knowing some of the behaviors that go on in here.
Okay, we ready? Any more discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote.
Counselors. Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levecq.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez. Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Counsel Mendez, do you want to read 2024-153?
This is item, this is old business, item number 2024-153. This is a, refer to a public hearing, roll call majority, full vote of the council. Appropriation order in the amount of $350,000 for funding the Barnstable High School roof replacement project as outlined in fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Thank you. Rationale, please.
The objective of this project is to, to fund the design and outline
The objective of this project is to fund the design and outline for the repair schedule for the Barnstable High School. Roof on Barnstable is over twenty-five, or approximately twenty-five years old, is showing signs of failure kind of everywhere. Added to that, added to the size of the roof, as you can see from this picture, we have an added complexity with the solar panels. They're great for providing energy, clean energy, but it is a, it is a problem we have to work with as we phase a, or phased roof repair through this, through this building.
Yes, okay. So this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? No, seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearing. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Council discussion. Counselor Ledke.
Yeah, I'm just curious, in the design process, are you going to look at the possibility of putting pitched roofs on any of these flat roofs?
I actually hadn't considered that myself. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that would make sense with the solar panels or not. I don't, I'm not sure. I haven't considered that, actually. Interesting.
I just know it's something, with my military background, we made a huge effort where we could, because it seemed to be cost-effective, to replace built-up roofs with pitch roofs wherever we could when we were facing a replacement. So I just wondered if it was part of your analysis.
I will inquire about that, as I hadn't considered that for this project.
Me also. Counsel Mendez.
Just a comment on the pitch roof idea. Don't forget, this school is like four different buildings from four or five different eras. So putting a pitch roof on here would cost millions and millions of dollars. You'd have to do structure, a lot of structure, all, I mean, some of this stuff goes back to nineteen sixty-two or something like that, so it's just not feasible.
I call it the Franken Building, because it's three decades, essentially. Three eras. Built, and then built, and then built again. Yep.
Yeah, go ahead.
Excuse me, I was just going to say, the original building, I think opened in sixty-one or sixty-two, somewhere in there. Yeah. A quick question about the solar. How old is solar that's currently on the roof?
So I don't think it's all the same age, actually. I think it's different, different phases from purchasing agreements, I believe. So there's like different times for each, for each section.
Obviously, the solar is going to have to be removed in order to re-roof, and would it make much sense to put old solar back on? Is there, I don't know how your range would suffer lease purchase or whatever it is with solar, but is that something to look into?
So from my knowledge, these are all on a purchasing agreement where they own, they own these, we buy the energy from them at a discounted rate. But again, from my knowledge, these are actually like almost in different phases, so that, that's part of the complexity, that's what the study is going to look into. What is the best way to do this? So if we can time, time the roof repairs or replacement with the end of these leases, that would be...
Right, exactly.
That would be the way to do it.
Counsel Starr.
Thank you. Is there a plan to put more solar on the roof?
Do you mean add to existing? Not to my knowledge, not currently.
Does, excuse me, does the solar that's there penetrate the roof, or is it sitting on top of the rubber roof?
It's ballasted, so it's, it's weighted, correct.
Okay.
The largest, the largest issue we have with the solar panels is it provides an awesome place to nest for seagulls, so. If you're a tradesman that has to go up there and work during the summertime, you, you, you know, I've been chased off a roof before by seagulls. It's, they're scary. They can be very scary, honestly.
They're very aggressive about their homes.
They are.
So you might increase the, like, the foam panels underneath the roof? Is that what you're thinking with insulation, or?
So, so when this, when this roof is redone, I imagine we're going to have to become, we're going to have to upgrade the insulation value of the roof, correct?
Okay. I'm impressed with the, with the design and permitting, how low it, how low the cost is. It's like three percent, which is much lower than we see.
That is, that is a low estimate, I agree.
Yep.
Counsel Clerk.
Thank you very much, President Penn. Are any of these projects, especially if they're dovetailed with aging solar panels, eligible for grants, energy grants or school grants?
For this project in particular, one of the things that it might be eligible for is an application to the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and some state support for an accelerated repair program. So that would be some consideration for the future, because it is such a large project. They have, they put their accelerated repair program on hold for a little while, but they did restart it this year, and it's something that we're considering. But there may be other incentives out there as well that we could take a look at.
Okay. Counsel Crowe.
One question, a seagull question. Put it nicely, like, the guano from the, from the seagulls, does that age a roof quicker? You know what I mean? It's pretty nasty stuff, I'm just wondering.
No, no, you have a point. Is the pH affecting the...
Corrosion, yeah.
The roof itself. I mean, it could. It's a sarnafell roof, it's like PVC, but more than that, what I can tell you definitely affects it is when they get, you know, Cohog, crab, anything, they drop it on the roof. Right now, if you go literally today, I saw this, you can see them, they start to go to the ground, grab grass, hay, anything, and they start flying up on the roof to create nests. What happens is they create the nests, eventually through rain, whatever other means, it goes into the store, the roof drains on the roof, it's a flat roof, so it doesn't take a lot, okay? Clogs the drain, and then the water backs up and infiltrates, with an old roof, with an old sarnafell roof, standing water, if it's, if it's like that, it will find any, any hole.
Just thinking maybe some netting or something to find another place to live. That might save some repair costs. Yeah, that'd be good.
We have tried a few different items, to, no avail currently.
They're pretty smart. All righty, we ready to vote? We're mired in the seagull problems. Okay.
Counselors. Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ledke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
That's twelve yes.
Counsel Starr. Number two thousand twenty-four dash one five-four.
I'd like to open a public hearing on item two zero two four dash one five-four. Appropriation order in the amount of sixty-three thousand eight hundred dollars for the, for the Barnstable United Elementary School library carpet replacement project as outlined in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, fiscal year two thousand twenty-nine, capital improvement plan.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. Rationale, please.
Yep, the existing carpet at both schools is old, stained, torn, peeling. These carpets also are commercially cleaned every summer, so that's, that costs money to maintain them. Hygiene, obviously, you don't really, carpets aren't the best for people with asthma, dust, things of that nature, so we would seek to put down some sort of resilient flooring, either LVT, something of that nature, to replace it, to increase, increase air quality, but also decrease the maintenance of it.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to address this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Thank you for that. All those in favor? Thank you. Council discussion. Seems like a no-brainer to me. Counsel Turkelson.
How many square feet is the library?
Offhand, I'm not sure of that square foot, foot number. Go ahead. I don't have that, I can get it to you, though.
Any other discussion?
President Penn, can I jump in for a second?
Sure.
I just am noticing that the motion is limited to Barnstable United Elementary School, and this project would be also for the intermediate school.
So it's for both, it's for both libraries?
For both libraries, yes.
Okay. We'll call that Scribner's error, and we'll update that. So it's the Barnstable, hold on a minute, United Elementary School and the BIS. BIS and BUE. Correct?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Got to get the lingo down. Thank you for that correction to catch that. It's written in the book, it just wasn't written here that way. All righty. Done discussing? Ready for a vote? Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ledke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
That's twelve yes.
Okay, two thousand twenty-four dash one fifty-five. Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Penn, and if, unless I'm mistaken, this is the second to the last agenda item. Old business requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority vote of the full council, item number two thousand twenty-four dash one five-five. Appropriation order in the amount of three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for the Hyannis West Bathroom Renovations Project as outlined in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, fiscal year two thousand twenty-nine, capital improvements plan.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Thank you. Public hearing is open. Rationale, please.
Yep, the goal of this project would be to remodel bathrooms at Hyannis West, not just a fixture change, but a remodel of the tile, tiles, floors, and interior of the finished spaces in there. They're old, I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead.
Let's see. Again, this, this will reduce the maintenance needs in those bathrooms, and they are in pretty rough shape, as you can see. We would aim to remodel two sets, so four, again, and we would have other, other bathrooms as a separate bid or alternate bid. That would be our aim.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearing. I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Thank you. Council discussion. Counsel Turkelson.
Thank you, President Penn. The heating system, that's at the back end of the picture, that will be replaced with a different type of heating system, or, I mean, it looks like it's rotted through.
Well, that register would be replaced, but the heating system would, would be the same.
So we just put a new register, like you can get new, new old registers?
Yeah, you could, you could definitely find something to put over that, replace it.
Counsel Tamish, did you have something?
Oh, I was just going to say, it seems like fiscal year twenty-five is going to be the year of the bathroom for the school department. Good grief.
Let's hope so.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you, we are hiring a plumber. We're still looking if anybody knows anybody.
Good to know. Counsel Ledke.
Yeah, I was just curious, you know, tagging along with that, all those replacements. Are you doing automatic fixtures for all of this stuff when you replace, automatic flushing, automatic water on and off?
So I'm going to be honest, I'd recommend not doing that, just from my experience. It seems like we have more, it seems like that was done previously, and there's been so many problems, they're actually going back to just putting manual, manual fixtures in.
Yes, they break.
What was the problem, just they're breaking? They're, or?
Correct. Not as robust. I will say this, there are some, some Sloan flushometers in BWB that are original to the building, and they still work. It's kind of amazing.
Put them in a museum.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other discussion on this item? No? We're ready to vote? Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ledke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
That's twelve yes.
All right, item number two oh two four dash one five-six. Counselor Leveque.
This is, thank you, Madam President. This is old business. I move to open a public hearing, roll call, vote for item number two thousand twenty-four dash one five-six. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of one million dollars for the HVAC Direct Digital Control Replacement Project as outlined in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, fiscal year two thousand twenty-nine, capital improvement plan as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Thank you. Rationale, please.
So the objective of this project is to upgrade all the pneumatic controls in our schools to direct digital, electronic controls. That gives you increased control reliability, energy savings throughout the district. You can also make changes digitally, which is, you know, a lot easier, if I could do it from my computer. You can expect increased energy savings across the district once this is fully implemented as well, and it'll reduce maintenance, for sure.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Moved in second, then. All those in favor? Thank you. Council discussion. Counsel Ledke.
I had a question about an earlier item. Since this is the last item, can I say something about that?
The earlier item?
Yeah.
No, let's just deal with this item, and then if you have a question, we can go back, okay? Any questions here on this item? No discussion? All right. Million dollars, they're just, like that. We'll go for the vote.
Counselors. Leveque.
Yes.
Ledke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
That's twelve yes.
All right. Counsel Ledke, what was your question?
Yeah, it just was something that Counselor Crowe had brought up about the playgrounds, and you guys had said that, you know, you only knew of black, of those rubbery or surfaces.